Senate, Seaside Council.
Council and agency member Miller.
Here.
Council and agency member Burks.
Here.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizona.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Chair Pacheco. Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We'll have a moment of silence and then I will ask Councilmember Burks to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Which I named, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go to item number four, which is review of the agenda. City Attorney, are there any additions to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. There are no additions, but item thirteen A, the closed session, we can, we will not have a need for that tonight.
Thank you. We will adjust the agenda appropriately. Next, we go to item number five, which is public comments. Members of the public are wishing to address the city council on matters underneath the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside may do so now for up to three minutes. This is also the time to comment on presentation items. We ask that you hold your comments on items on agenda until the item is called. You will get three minutes during that time. It will be helpful for the record if you will state your name. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Laura Murphy. I'm a resident of Seaside. I am an active volunteer with Friends of Seaside Parks Association in public parks in Seaside. Recently, we were at Lincoln Cunningham Park for a weekly work day, and at this park, there is a project about to break ground very soon. This is the Lincoln Cunningham Park Phase One Arterial Trail Project, which the council has approved funding for trail improvements at the park. We're maintaining plants, native plant habitat in that space. Friends of Seaside Parks is highly involved in this. There was a construction project that occurred in this park, the basketball court, which we're very happy about and really grateful for the city's ongoing involvement in supporting the foster activities in these parks. One aspect of that construction that we observed was a hydro seeding application where there was an attempt by the company that did the construction to establish plants in the area that was disturbed surrounding the basketball court. And what we observed was that this was a failed attempt, a failed project. The hydro seeding did not ultimately work. It's a very complex situation to establish plants. There is no irrigation. Public Works was not tasked with ongoing establishment and maintenance. And as a part of this upcoming arterial trail project, there's a substantial component of the budget in that project that is dedicated to, once again, hydro seeding and establishing plants in the area of the park, essentially all of the area of the park that will be disturbed when these trails are reestablished. I just want to bring this to the attention of the council now, as this is about to go in and this hydro seeding will come up, to emphasize that there might be a much more functional opportunity to participate with the community organizations and the resources that are focused on native plant habitat establishment, pollinator habitat, beautifying our parks, community involvement, leveraging volunteer networks, et cetera. There could be a very good opportunity to leverage the funding that is associated with that component of this project and all of those other community resources in order to have a more successful establishment of beautiful landscape and take advantage, again, of those public funds and resources that otherwise might be wasted in the same exact way that we have already seen happen in the very same location. Just want to bring it to your attention. Thank you very much for your time.
Oops, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Gwen Harper-Matwire, and my family have been residents of Seaside since nineteen forty-six. On August seventeenth and nineteenth, I sent all of you emails expressing my concerns regarding the grounds conditions at Mission Memorial Park. Included were my July email communications with manager Kevin Gately and my August written complaint to the Foundation Partners Corporation, who are the Florida-based owners of Mission Memorial Park. To date, I have received no verbal or written responses to my emails nor my certified registered letter, which is a real problem. Yet I found it very interesting that after initially emailing Mr. Gately with all fifteen photos of the grounds that I had taken, when I returned to the park two and a half weeks later, trash cans were emptied, the headstones that I photographed were trimmed and cleaned up, but the surrounding ones were still in the same deplorable condition. Again, the entire area was not water, weeded, or cleared of debris. Headstones were still covered with uncontrolled crabgrass and sand piles. Some headstones are sinking below the ground level. All of my concerns fit into the highlighted areas of the handout I've submitted to you today. This information was taken directly from the California Code of Cemetery Regulations. I encourage each of you to visit Mission Memorial Park and see for yourselves, especially viewing the entire critically deteriorating upper hillside area where my family plots are located. Grace Manio is the acting manager at the moment and is very much aware of my concerns as well as those of other local families. All the office staff there have been cooperative and very professional. However, the bottom line is that these problems can only be solved at the corporate decision-making level. At a bare minimum, all areas of the cemetery need to be watered equally. And secondly, more than one employee needs to be rehired to maintain the fifteen acres of land. Communication with this corporation is tedious and extremely difficult. That's why I'm appealing to you as city representatives to send a letter of support for these concerns to the Foundation Partners Corporation, asking for continuous professional maintenance and care of the grounds. Those who are buried there deserve attention and respect. Thank you for your time.
Mayors and member of the council, I am Nancy Selfridge, former Monterey City Council member, and Gwen and I have been friends for over forty years. In December, I was with her at the cemetery. It looked very nice. When we went back this August, I was appalled at how poorly kept up it was. There were dead flowers all over. There was a flag that was broken laying on the ground on one of the graves. It is not being kept at all. The grass was dead. I have watched over the years what Seaside is doing, and you guys are doing a great job with your town, and I know that you do not want the cemetery looking like that. I am hoping that each of you will go there and for yourself and just see what's happening. Gwen has sent registered letters that are not answered. She has sent emails that aren't answers. Her phone calls are not answers, and her faxes are not answers. She is not only fighting for her family's graves, but the families of everyone that has loved ones there. Thank you for your time, and I know you'll look into this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Dennis Alexander, and I am a member of the Neighborhood Improvement Commission with the city. And I just want to let you know that not this coming Saturday, but the following Saturday, the twenty-eighth, we will be having the second of our two Neighborhood Improvement Commission cleanups that we work together with Greenway Sun in the morning of that day. This is something that we've done as a commission for many years now, something that the community has really come to appreciate. I just want to really quickly read off the vocations here and what's not accepted. Basically, in the dumps, we'll take basically anything, but there is a list of things that they won't, they won't accept. And every time it seems that people bring those by, so I do want to read those out. First of all, the dumpsters will be located at Highland Otis Park and Mingo, I'm sorry, Highland Otis, Mingo and Minnesoito, the corner. There will be one in Mounds Market Parking Lot. There'll be one at twelve sixty-four Noche Blana Street. Near, there'll be one near Orterra School and Pichetti Dog Park. There'll be another one. So I think that's five altogether. As mentioned, they do, they will accept pretty much anything except for mattresses, paint, chemicals, oil chemicals, refrigerators, batteries, oil, asbestos, tires, antifreeze, cleaning products, washers and dryers, and any hazardous materials. The doors will be opened at eight thirty in the morning and will close at twelve unless they fill earlier. I've got quite a few. I've got several flyers here. I only need a few, so I'll leave a few with the city clerk Dominique, and anybody who wants to come down and get some, feel free to, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank y'all for having me. I just want to come and make a public apology because I had an incident at Kappa Park and they, they over-exaggerated on the damage. They said hundreds of dollars in damage, and I squashed, I broke three squash, and I threw a garbage can, which I place back where it goes, and I turned the table, which I put back in place. But that's not what I came to say. I came to say, they publicly smeared me, my family name, which I've been working on, you know, for, for some decades here in Seaside, you know? And they totally over-exaggerated, and it was all over barbecue pit. There were big smoker at the park that we put there. It's about a four hundred dollar smoker. They come and just removed it. It's, it's been there for the longest. We use it when I have events for my basketball team and stuff. And they called me to the scene when they, when they got ready to take it. If you're going to take it, just go in and take it. Leave me where I'm at. Don't come, don't call me to the scene because you know I'm going to be upset about it, you know? And that's how the incident happened. But I want to make a public apology instead of writing something up because a few of the ladies there, I really had it, you know, got kind of fond of them, like Beth and a few of them. She's a real nice lady and I can consistently, you know, like always eating from the garden. I probably ate more from the garden than anybody else, so don't be thinking I don't like the garden, you know what I'm saying? I love their garden and I'm not going to take too much y'all's time. And I just want y'all to hear it, hear it from my voice because that's not, that's not a representation. Timothy Ronald does see. That's not me at all. And thank you for y'all's time. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
It's been much lower for me.
Good afternoon, Mayor Oglesby and city council members. My name is Carol Chorbodin, and I am the Monterey Peninsula Airport District, Airport District Division One Board Member. I'm here today to provide you with some important information from the airport. First, we were told, and we got an information on Tuesday, given the schedule for the U.S. Air Force Slenderbirds that are coming for next week's air show, and I'll leave you copies of it that we've never seen it before, which is lovely, so that you can advise the residents when they're going to be here. They're arriving Tuesday and Wednesday. They'll do practice runs on Friday and perform Saturday and Sunday, then leave Monday and Tuesday to their next event. We are really thrilled to be able to support this amazing group of American professionals. Next, I would like to tell you that, given its amazing forward-thinking, I'm honored to be a board member of the Monterey Peninsula Airport. And I'm pleased to tell you that last month, we met with the architects and viewed the terminal design, which will be final in November. As you've likely seen, if you've been out there, there's been quite a lot of earth moved. I actually saw it yesterday, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty cubic yards, to be exact, in preparation for the beginning of the terminal construction in early twenty twenty-five. From an energy standpoint, the energy efficiency has been realized with the installation of the solar farm and it, which currently is powering ninety-five percent of the meters owned by the airport, and it's decreased the utility bill from two hundred ninety thousand dollars a year to about thirty, between thirty and forty thousand dollars a year. The new terminal has been designed to be lead-platinum and net-zero carbon-ready, so there will be next to no additional power. From a noise standpoint, the aircraft, the APU, the auxiliary power units will now from the, will have the jetways, will be electric coming from the jetways. No more of the GPUs, the ground power units, the gasoline-powered ones that make more noise, which, again, more noise efficiency at the airport with the new ones. The airport staff has also been tremendously successful in securing FAA grants, and you probably saw in Congressman Panetta's office, they were just signed for thirty-seven million dollars of FAA grant offerings to complete apron and parking lot for the new terminal, purchase a new aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle, and address main runway issues. All this activity makes me very excited to be a part of the long-term future of the airport, and I can not only assist my industry, but all of our residents and businesses who will benefit and thrive as a result. And finally, I'm, the ability to give back to my community, which I've, in which I've lived, been privileged to live for so many years, gives me a great feeling of pride and satisfaction. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I'm available for any questions at any time. We also, yesterday, too, we got cards, and this is the follow the metamorphosis of the airport. It's a QR code. Well, I brought cards for you, too, if that's okay. Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sandra Gray, and I'm a long-term, very long-term resident of Seaside and commissioner and staff member. I just came up to remind you about tomorrow, not tomorrow, but this weekend is the Seventeenth Annual Seaside Artist Tour. And it's from, it's on Saturday and Sunday from eleven to five. I have brochures here, and there's some out on the two public desks out in the hallway. Also, I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that the artwork on display here are paintings by Jody William Gully, and I wanted to make sure I didn't forget to tell you that. Thank you.
Robert Daniel, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Attorney and City Manager. My name is Robert Daniels, Jr., and I'm a community organizer for good and healthy communities, specifically working in the location of Seaside. Last council meeting, I brought your attention to the diocese, forty-plus units inside of the Seabreeze Apartments located at eighteen eighty-one Baker Street that reported, reported pest infestation stations, specifically cockroaches. I bring it back to your attention to ask for continued support as we move forward. And also, through our research, we found in the city municipal code fifteen point zero four point one five three, the Pest Elimination Section three oh nine of the two thousand eighteen International Property Maintenance Code Amendment, it basically says that when code enforcement comes in and they find that there's an infestation presence, that they should be required, that the property managers should be required to hire licensed professionals and then proceed through the matter in a, in a way that is the least detrimental to human health. I want to say that the process that the property managers have been going forth since till today have not been the best practices, so we just ask that the diocese and staff pay a little bit more attention to the processes going on and keep the residents in mind that they do have children. There has been reports of children being bitten by cockroaches and that the, the processes that they're going through now, the foggers are very detrimental to their health and they have adverse effects, so just bring it back to your attention to say that we need staff support, and we need communal support to address this matter in the most beneficial way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Peter Kaiser, longtime resident of Seaside. And as we missed the prayer this morning, I'd like to offer one. Let us pray. Lord, we glorify you. We thank you for your sacrifice on the cross and for forgiving us of our sins as we forgive others. Thank you for your providence and provision and help there to be revival in this country. Help people to follow the Bible and the original intent of the Constitution. Help this city council to make wise decisions following the Bible. And also during this time, we hope that the voters in this city and around the country are hopefully changing their positions to be more pro-life, to protect the preborn from conception to natural death. And we are understanding that they understand the original intent of the Declaration of Independence, that we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights. Among these are the right to life. So right to life is actually in our founding documents two hundred and fifty years ago. And let's see, we also understand that a number of major corporations are learning to get away from DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, which are derived from Marxist background, and those were actually leading to discrimination against certain groups of people. And they are deciding to leave behind DEI, and we hope that others are going to do that as well, that they respect the rights of all the workers and they don't discriminate against some people. And they are not asking certain groups to apologize for others based on Marxist doctrines. And we hope that the most family-oriented, who are for marriage between a man and a woman, it is still in the Constitution of the State of California, marriage between a man and a woman. We hope they will vote to keep that in the Constitution of the State of California. So God bless the city and the voters, that they would vote biblically and pro-family and constitutionally in Jesus' name. Amen.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. I'd just like some confirmation. Is the property managers for Seabreeze the same ones that will be managing Seagrove? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, at this time, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. City manager, City Attorney, are there any questions, issues, or concerns you can ask her at this time?
Yes, Mayor, at least four. And again, I'll work backwards as a comment. I don't know that the management of Seagrove has been established yet. We'll find out, and we will report back at the next city council meeting. Regarding the infestation issue, I know the staff is monitoring that. I know that staff members will be present at a meeting later this evening. And again, we'll report back on our progress at the next city council meeting. Regarding the letter of support for Mission Memorial Park, that seems to be something that staff can administratively do because all we are asking is that they follow state standards. And the comments regarding hydro seeding are well-taken, and staff will be in touch with our, our native plant advocates because that is probably a better long-term approach.
I'd say you turn.
I think the city manager covered it. I am working closely with the code enforcement team that is looking at the Seabreeze apartment issue and to fully address that.
Yeah, just to highlight a couple of things. I think we clearly heard about the condition at the cemetery. I think we clearly heard about the condition at the cemetery. And I think the first step at that is to send some type of official letter from the city, just to start that. For the city manager, I'm just saying in the ether, we have problems with the seeding before at the, at the basketball court. So I don't think the council thinks that's a good idea, even though somehow it made it into this contract, so. And then I, just to highlight, the city manager just say that I think we're answering, speaking to Mr. Daniels' comments. Since we were notified, the city has taken actions to make sure we are doing what we can to, to eliminate that infestation at that apartment complex. I think that's it. We'll go on to number six, which is, no, I want to, I want to go back a minute. For me, a personal privilege, I would just say I want to thank Mr. Dunn for the public apology to the city and the residents. I think I said that before, we appreciate when people are strong enough to publicly say when, when things shouldn't have went the way they went. So I thank him for that. We're going to item number six, which is Public Agency Communications. Is there anyone that would like to come down from any public agency? And let our, I guess our finest is going to come down first, Mr. Edwards. So if you don't mind giving a few minutes.
Quick comment. Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the council. I'm the acting finance director, Jesse Riley, and I'm here to comment on behalf of the Seaside Municipal Water System, for which the Finance Department manages the billing administration. So in the beginning of September, members of the public who are connected to the Seaside Municipal Water System received their, a version of their bill via email in addition to the regular paper bill. And some questions that the Finance Department received were whether or not this in fact came from the Seaside Municipal Water System and whether or not they're going to continue to receive the paper bill. So I'm just here to comment and confirm that it did in fact come from the Seaside Municipal Water System. And if someone was receiving a paper bill in the past, they'll continue to receive their paper bill, which they did, unless they opt out of that. And I just want to take this moment to also point out that there's other rules that the Seaside Municipal Water System offers to help customers manage their bill. We have an integrated voice response system. The phone number for that is eight 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 two nine one zero three six five. And that allows you to check your balance over the phone and it's available in Spanish. And we also have an online billing platform that's available at municipalonlinepayments.com/csidca. And furthermore, to avoid any confusion going forward, we will customers in email bills and allow all our other existing customers to opt in if they choose. Thank you.
Director Edwards, if you would like to come down?
Walking a little slow these days. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, citizens, Mayor and Council. Alvin Edwards, Director, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, Division One, Seaside. It's been a while since I've been down here. Last time I was here, we were on our way to the courthouse and we got in the courthouse. Now we had decisions been made since we've been in the courthouse. And I want to give you a quick update on a few of them. On September fifth, the Sixth Appellate Court in Monterey, in San Jose, gave its judgment against Monterey Peninsula Water Taxpayers. Taxpayers won that decision. And now the district is looking at options on how we can close that up. We're looking at option. And they wonder why that lawsuit was. It was on that water supply charge that we had. So that one went through the gamut of the loco and went up to the appellate court. And now we're trying to find a way to settle it. More to come on that in the future. That, that lawsuit have about six parts to it. So you'll be hearing something in the future on that. On the Monterey Peninsula versus Cal Am, that's the eminent domain lawsuit. That one went through the demerit process right now. And right now, the district have won that demerit process. The judge in that one is a Monterey County judge and she will have a final decision in the upcoming weeks. So August twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, she had the tentative ruling for the district against Cal Am. Monterey Peninsula Water Management District versus La Coo. That matter is in San Jose at the appellate. Sixth District Court, and we still get, waiting on dates for briefings and a date for oral arguments that have not came up yet. Now you can read more about our pending litigation in the, in the month's agenda. Like next month, we will have a list of all our pending litigation. This is just the few that came through. So look at our agenda, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. Our meetings are on the third Monday of the month. So you can read in our agenda, all the lawsuits and all the legal stuff that we're going through. Now I got a few more things right here. The water, water allocation process. On Wednesday, September twelfth, we had a meeting at the district about the water allocation process. And in that process, we talked about water allocation for the future that we hope to have the, be given out by January. We got a schedule and I have that schedule right here. But in that meeting, I was glad to hear that our mayor, city attorney, city staff within that meeting is crucial about water allocation, that you understand that method. But you were well representative in that one. I was surprised to see the city attorney in there and that one, you know? That's, that's quite a boost right there to have the city attorney there. So on that, September twelfth, they had that meeting. October the ninth, October to November, it'll be a presentation to the full city council in the city about the water allocation given by the general manager. In December, we helped to have the first reading of the ordinance. In January, we hoped to adopt that ordinance. Now, I'll tell you, because we doing all this is to get ahead so the city can do its planning for future projects. And that brings me into the next month, next item. And that project like the one of Broadway, that massive project, good looking project right now, but I know it's going to be really good once they finish at the post office, across the street from the post office. That's a major project. And we want the cities to be able to start their planning for major projects like that. The water won't be available until twenty twenty-five. If Monterey One Water and Arizona, our council member, keep them in line and keep them going. So that's one thing. But the planning process can start. We give out the water, but you can't use it until the project gets online, but we, you know you have it. But that's another one. Thanks to the, with the CDO in place, Seaside couldn't build that project down there off of Cal Am Water. Seaside Municipal had water. And through the city attorney, the mayor, who sits on our board and also sits on the water master board, came up with a solution to wheel water from Seaside Municipal down there to that site. It took a lot of effort, took a lot of work. It took, it took some time. Because even though the city, just for a joke of it, was thinking about laying a pipeline down to that location, that probably couldn't happen because Cal Am wouldn't let that happen. So here you go, the city council, mayor, city attorney and staff worked hard to get that water down there. That's why it took so long on that one. And once again, I want to thank our council member, Alizor Monterey One, for keeping the expansion project on time and online. That's an important project to get us into the next phase of water here. And that will, we hope to have it complete by the fourth quarter of next year, twenty twenty-five. So please keep up the good work on that one. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Director Edwards. Are there any questions from the council? No, no question. I do want to thank you for all your hard work and advocacy on behalf of the residents of Seaside to make sure we do have water coming, particularly freeing up this allocation that we believe is coming forward. So I, I want to thank you for that. Before you sit down, I, I want to agree with everything you said, but I want to be clear into the ether, right? For Cal Am, we would have laid that pipe down Broadway. That wasn't a joke. And so we appreciate the innovators, which was the city attorney and Robert Greathouse when she was here, but we would have laid that pipe down there. But they seen, they seen the reality of it and they came to grips with this. By time, it's time for them to, the building to actually need water, water would be there. So I want to appreciate you for your advocacy because you freed up and made sure we were able to keep some of our current allocation on the books when the district was talking about zeroing that out. So I want to say that publicly, that we do well together, we work well together. So I want to thank you.
Well, the city, quick thing, Mayor, the city always did good with their water. They did good. And to lose water after you save water, I think that would have, would have been unfair. And I'm glad you were there at the board to speak up. And I, I think you had three votes right off the bat, mine's and yours and Director Riley, which he always say, tell the people in Seaside, I'd say hello, because he has part of Seaside. And another thing in closing, that sitting on our boards and committees throughout this peninsula, like MST Board, I think our mayor, Pro Tim, sits on. Projects go for decades without getting done, but then you find out they're getting done. That bus route from Marina to Sand City, when I was on a council, I was on MST Board, we talked about it. They finally completed that, at least get the EIR approved by the Coastal Commission. It takes some time. I'm glad our mayor, Pro Tim, took that on after I left the council. So that's all I have.
I want to just say, we, we thank Mr. George Riley for his support of the city and the residents. He's, he's a great advocate for water and particularly public water. My last thing is, I sit on the district board by purview of the mayors on the peninsula sending me there. So I want to recognize all of our mayors having the faith in me to send me there and I represent them and their residents on the district board. So thank you.
Right. And you sit on Water Master as president of the city of Seaside, right? All right, don't, don't get it all out.
I want to thank the mayors, they send me and they keep.
I know for that one, but you. Thank you all. I'm glad to see all the citizens, I'm still around. I got two more years, then y'all get rid of me. All right.
And we'll move on. I do, to preference, one or two things. I am going to move the agenda around a little bit. I was, I should have took care earlier, but I'm going to move up the proclamation for the Gully family right after our Seaside News passed, because I don't want them to be necessarily held until after closed session. And then I probably would ask my, not mine, but I would ask the, the icon that I call, look here, probably Mr. Mason, to say a few short words at that presentation, because I know he's a dear, was a dear friend of Mr. Gully. And out of respect for both of you. Let's go to item number six A, Seaside News Broadcast for Upcoming Citywide Events and Community Announcements.
Let's dip into this week's edition of Seaside City News, covering the events happening September nineteenth through October third. As we mark Seaside's seventieth birthday in October, we want to honor the incredible residents who have helped shape our vibrant community by gathering stories and memories for a special tribute feature. If you or someone you know has lived in Seaside for fifty years or more, we'd love to hear from you. Visit bit.ly/Seaside50years for more information. Also, on Friday, September twentieth at seven PM, the Walter Lee Avery Gallery presents a reception at City Hall to celebrate seventy years of Seaside. So head down and see the history exhibit that lines the halls and mingle with other residents and art lovers. The Friends of Seaside Parks Association is having several workdays all over the city this September. For more information, including upcoming dates and locations, visit friendsofseasideparks.org. Regen Monterey is excited to announce a grant funding opportunity for the SB thirteen eighty-three Edible Food Recovery Program. These grants are intended to expand and enhance edible food recovery programs at food rescue organizations and services throughout the county. Organizations, businesses or public entities that collect, generate and distribute food to those in need can learn more about this exciting program on the bulletin board at regenmonterre.org. The City of Seaside is looking to hire an associate planner to work in the Community Development Department. If you or someone you know is interested in this position, visit the Employment Opportunity section of the city's website. Join Monterey Bay FC as they celebrate Hispanic Heritage Night on Saturday, September twenty-first at Cardinali Stadium. The Union hosts Orange County SC at seven PM. The first fifteen hundred fans will receive an MBFC Sugar Skull Bottle Opener Keychain, and there will be brand new Hispanic Heritage merch available for purchase, including a limited edition pregame warmup jersey. Secure your seats now at montereybayfc.com/tickets. Hispanic Heritage Month begins September fifteenth. There will be events and celebrations throughout the county. Entonces nos encantaría verte por ahí. Ya celebramos juntos, Central Coast. On that note, on Sunday, September twenty-second, Seaside is proud to present its fourth annual Oaxaca by the Sea event. From eleven AM to four, the City Hall lawn will be the place to celebrate our sister city. More than half of the Latino population of Seaside is from the Oaxaca area of Southern Mexico, so the roots run deep in our community. Expect vendors, performers and information booths for all to enjoy. Officials from Oaxaca are traveling the two thousand plus miles to Seaside to strengthen the bond between our two regions and celebrate the beauty, culture and pride that our communities share. We can't wait to see you there. Calling all Seaside residents, how would you invest two point two million dollars to address priority needs in your community over the next five years? A survey is now available to share your insights. The City of Seaside creates a consolidated plan every five years to identify community needs and priorities, and we need your help. Two more community forums will take place in September, the first of which will be at the Community Center in Soper Field on the twenty-sixth from five to seven PM, and the other will be at Laguna Grande Hall on the twenty-seventh from five to seven PM. For more information or to fill out the online survey, visit ci.seaside.ca.us/cbbg. We thank you for doing your part to help create a better Seaside for us all. The Seaside Police Athletics League, along with the Recreation Department, is excited to announce that registration has begun for the Fall Basketball League. Residents can register now and non-residents can join starting October first. To register, search PAL at bit.ly/SeasideRecTrack. Interested volunteers and coaches, please contact eight three one seven one eight seven two three eight. Attention Seaside pet owners. On Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, the City of Seaside sponsors a mobile spay and neuter clinic providing low-cost services for underserved communities. This is an appointment-only event, so call or text nine two five nine six seven one zero zero one, or visit snipbus.org for more information. Mark your calendars for Saturday, September twenty-eighth from eight thirty AM to noon, because the City of Seaside Neighborhood Improvement Commission is sponsoring a citywide cleanup in your neighborhood. There will be multiple dumpster locations throughout the city, including Highland Otis Park, Mals Market Parking Lot, Ortera School and Pachetti Dog Park. This event is for Seaside residents only, so make sure you get there early and clean out that clutter. The Seaside Engineering and Public Works Department invites you to a ribbon cutting event at Havana Solis Park on Saturday, September 21st at noon. FOSPA is having a workday from 10:00 AM to noon at Havana Solis, so come out and celebrate the amazing work that so many do to transform our beloved seaside parks. Snacks and refreshments will be provided, so come on down. Construction notice. Monterey Peninsula Engineering will start the construction of the Lincoln Cunningham Park Phase One arterial trail project for the City of Seaside on October 1st. The project includes the construction of a concrete multi-use path through Lincoln Cunningham Park from San Pablo Avenue to Lincoln Street, pedestrian paths from the new multi-use path to Yerba Buena Court, Lindbergh Court, and Sarape Court, storm drainage improvements, curb ramp retrofits, one on-street accessible parking stall, and seating for erosion control. The project is expected to be completed in early 2025. Seaside's Tiny Todd University is now enrolling for all of you who have children between the ages of three to five. If you are looking for a place for your young ones to engage, grow, discover, and explore, then this is the program for you. Classes run weekdays from 9:00 AM to noon. To set up an interview for your family, call 831-899-6823. On Saturday, October 5th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Seaside Fire Department invites you to this year's annual open house to kick off National Fire Prevention Week. There will be community resource tables, live demonstrations by firefighters, activities for the whole family, and a free barbecue. The dedication and unselfishness of Seaside Fire is exemplary, and the love and appreciation they show to our community stretches far beyond our moments of peril. This event highlights the true spirit of Seaside Fire, a focus on safety, an unwavering sense of loyalty, and unmatched resolution. So bring your whole family, meet some of Seaside's true heroes, and take a photo with Sparky. We'll see you at the firehouse. We appreciate you tuning in to Seaside City News, where we work to include, innovate, and inspire. We will be back with more exciting events to share on October 3rd. Until then, be safe, live fully, and enjoy all our city has to offer. Thank you, Seaside.
Wow, isn't there a lot happening in Seaside? All the time. Seaside is on the move. And next, it's my uh honor to present a proclamation posthumously to William Jody Gully Jr. and the family is here to accept on uh for the family. And I'm supposed to introduce a key on, I believe.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Attorney, City Manager, members of the public. It's a privilege to be here tonight to uh on behalf of the Art History Commission. Uh, they propose this, I think from a former commissioner Francois Avery, to recognize uh William Jody Gully Jr., who is a longstanding employee with the city and phenomenal artist and has done a lot of phenomenal work. Um, I've only known him since I've been in this position. Um, but we're going to recognize him tonight and a lot of people here who know him and uh we're going to have a proclamation for him, so. And equal, and I believe we have um spouse here. Does it come up or not? Right. And a few people, of course.
Thank you. Thank you so much, William. Family. Again, this is my honor to present this uh proclamation of uh City of Seaside proclamation uh in recognition of William Jody Gully. William Jody Lee Gully Jr. Whereas Seaside has lost a longstanding employee and community member, uh William Jody Lee Gully Jr. and whereas Jody, which uh family friends affectionately called him, was born in Bismarck, Alabama, and then moved to Seaside at the age of 15. And after high school, he was drafted into the Army and completed two tours in Vietnam and received multiple medals, which included the National Defense Service Medal and the Vietnam Service Medal with Bronze Stars. And whereas, uh, look, I want to be clear, uh, the Vietnam Service Medals with Bronze Stars, it mean you could receive more than one of those for heroism uh in battle, uh, I'm sure in in Vietnam. So I want to make sure. He just didn't get one. He got several. Um, whereas Jody did work for the City of Seaside and the Recreation Department for over 30 years. And whereas during this time, Jody contributed to the Recreation Department through his artistic craftsmanship, which included the city seal, uh, the preschool program world mural that should be updated, uh, Christmas decorations such as the Santa Claus uh sleigh. And I think we all said in that one, uh, I think we all said in that one. And when I read that, that's what I went back to, which is we all, you know, it's still, his artistry is still providing our young people with beauty and community and and something to really be proud of. So it is his legacy continues to live on. The elves workshop and painting the running path to the 2002 Summer Olympics Torch Relay. I don't remember if some of you lived in uh Seaside during that, but that path was such a wonderful gift to us to have the uh Summer Olympics run through our downtown and Broadway. Uh, whereas in addition to his work for the city, Jody completed numerous paintings and murals in Seaside, which are featured at the New Hope Baptist Church and Memorial Mission Memorial Park. And whereas after Jody retired from the city, he worked at interim where he counseled men with mental and substance abuse and helped many people off of the streets. And I think when we had the uh uh not a testimonial, but his uh celebration of life here, uh Mel, it was several people spoke to how he changed their life when they met him through interim or just uh walking through this community, how he changed their life. And that was very impactful for me to hear their stories. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, the Honorable Ian Oglesby, Mayor of the City of Seaside, on behalf of the City Council and residents, I am honored to recognize William Jody Lee Gully Jr. for his exemplary contributions and dedication to service to the City of Seaside. And on behalf of the City Council and residents, I want to present this to you. Proclamation. Uh, and also, uh, what we did uh through the uh city um uh manager and the city um clerk's office and leadership is they they prepared a plaque, right, to 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 memorialize a little bit more information about what he means to this community, what he's done. And also, if you look in towards the back of the room, City Clerk giving me directions, you'll see uh that placard uh saying again the same thing that says here, recognize him forever, that he made up the seal for the City of Seaside. And so uh for years to come, as long as this building is here, that plaque will identify him as the original artist of the seal for the City of Seaside. So again, present this to the family. Oh, now I'm going to sit down. Uh, who voices that? But the family may have some words to give them.
Thank you for everything.
I just want to say thank you to the city for all the years. Um, Jody was my father. Not only did my father work for the city, my mother worked for the city in City Hall for a number of years. And I worked um under Dave at the Patullo Swim Center for many years. So working for the city has kind of been in our family's genes. We've been around here for a long time and um even former um Mayor Jerry Smith is a relative of mine. So it's kind of end of a legacy of our family being involved in city matters. So it's it's kind of hard at the same time, but at the at the same point, I look at all the changes that my family made and all the contributions. And I really appreciate that, and I appreciate the city's support.
Jody, uh, Jody and I were basketball teammates at Monterey Peninsula College almost 58 years ago. 58 years ago. Most. But it's uh it's really something that the friendship lasted all these years on both. In fact, in many good times, we used to uh go to lunch. We also had a uh another um um man who was our friend as well, who was kind of like a trio of three, three mustaches years of the three amigos or something. But um I remember the first time that Jody told me that, you know, that he drew. I said, you draw what? He said, I I draw pictures. And I thought about myself, and when I drew pictures, I saw people laugh though. And I just assumed that he was just joking until he actually showed me. And I was completely deceived along the way. And I also know that he created the city seal. A lot of people didn't know that. Uh, and 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 when he passed away, it was a really tough thing. I'm still kind of feeling feeling about that. We had uh the memorial service at the Franklin Cemetery. So because of the shortage of time as they give you up there, you know, a lot of people missed their opportunities to really talk about how they felt about Jody, what Jody meant to them. And so thanks to uh certainly Ms. Davis, uh, Lewis, and certainly Sandra Bray, and the mayor, you know, we were able to hold in a more kind of tribute uh to Jody here in this town for fans. Because people were calling me saying, you know, I I love Jody, and I wanted to say something, but we didn't have the time. So we spent two hours here with this place packed with people. And they got up and people talked about what Jody meant to them. Certainly what Jody meant to the city has been already discussed, but for a lot of us individually, what he meant to us was really out of this world. And um, and so I'm just so happy that uh one of this proclamation has been done. Because, you know, he Jody contributed so much to the city, as as both Sarah and I think certain fellow pointed out, that he should never be forgotten. And one of the things that's going to keep him alive is that city seal. So if he did that, and that's never going to go away, and even to build those communities, he sealed it. So I just wanted to also thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Oh, there you go. Mayor and members of this council and others for this incredible tribute. And a very incredible person, like Jody Gully. I'm I'm just happy to to be here uh to be able to talk about him, you know, as a friend, somebody that I certainly admire, and somebody that was living for a lot of the soul and uh into this community. I'm so happy to be here and to be part of the organization.
Thank you so much. I want to thank, uh, I believe someone mentioned uh Francois Avery for uh taking this thing through at the Arts and History Commission and that whole group for uh being the catalyst to get this started. We will uh we'll just uh, we'll backtrack and we'll go into, I guess we got closed session. I would ask the city attorney to read us in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The council will have a meeting on one matter of public employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. The position is the city attorney. They will also have a conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 on one matter of potential litigation. For the benefit of the public, I don't expect there to be a a readout this evening.
Uh, thank you so much. We will open up public comment on our closed session items.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine to make public comment on the closed session items.
Mr. Mayor, Peter Kaiser, um, it's normal procedure to have these closed sessions at the end of a long meeting, sometimes at 11:00 or 11:30, rather than inconvenience several hundred people for a meeting of five people. So I do recommend that this meeting be held after our normal uh city council meeting. So we're inconvenient, not inconveniencing hundreds for the convenience of five people. Thank you.
Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you so much. Public comment remains open.
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Um, do these both closed session items coincide with one another? And would this have to do with um a recently filed lawsuit? I got the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments.
Uh, public comment remains open.
Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on closed session items.
Uh, thank you. Uh, public comment is closed. I'll have uh say two things, and then I'll ask the city attorney to speak to the the last question. Uh, the first comment about uh us doing it at this time, uh, sometimes we do do it at the beginning of the meeting, sometimes we do it at the end. And of course, uh, most of the time we try to do it at the end to uh preserve some of the public comment, I mean, the public's time. Uh, but when we do change it, it's for the benefit of the public. It's not for the benefit of five people. Uh, and so we have decided to do it at this time for the benefit of the public. Uh, and for example, it could be, it 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 makes sense to do it this time to save money uh because of the people we may be talking to. So it's good reasons to pull it up, and it's not the benefit of us because we're here whether it's before or after. So I just, I respect the question. I just wanted to give answers to the wider public. Uh, city attorney, can you uh speak to uh answer that question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, there is nothing further that I can report with respect to the closed session. The closed session is as it is stated.
Thank you so much. We will move into um closed session.
Wait till we're recording. I'll ask the city attorney to read us our closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Council met in closed session, discussed one matter of public employment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven. The position is city attorney. There is nothing to report coming out of that. Closed session item. They additionally had a conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two. On one matter of potential litigation. They received information and there is no reportable action at this time. That concludes my reading.
Thank you so much. We'll go to item number eight B. For those that just joined us now, we dispensed with eight A before we went into call session. Eight B car week after action report, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Muse has a presentation.
Evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and staff. I am Dan Mewes, the Recreation Director, and I'm going to give a brief presentation on the after action report for Car Week in the city of Seaside. Those of you that don't remember, we were happy to have four events for Car Week in Seaside. The first one occurred on Monday, the 12th. It was a Porsche Classic and it was on Del Monte. We had the Concorde de Le Mans on the 17th on the city hall lawn. Followed by the Concorde Italiano up at the golf course, but in that black horse golf course, and then Exotics on Broadway. Finished it off on the 17th as well on Broadway and Fremont Boulevard. So I gave a little bit of presentation prior to Car Week. I talked about Porsche Monarch Classic at that time. So this little recap. They had three thousand press in attendance. There's three hundred and fifty display cars. A little note for room improvement. I got notified by the organizer that they've outgrown their space there on Del Monte. They've, you know, kind of. They're looking at ways to expand. So for next year, they want to work with Granite Rock. Granite Rock has agreed to close down their shop a little bit early. And they want to extend the closure a little bit farther to go past the Granite Rock building. So we'll work with them a little bit more as we get closer to the start of the event. But I think they know that that is a good kickoff to Car Week and they're seeing more and more people coming to start off here in the city of Seaside. Couple pictures from that event. The one on the left is a twenty million dollar vehicle. Pretty pricey and it looks nice. I wonder, you know, how fast it actually goes. All right, moving on, we got the Concorde de Le Mans. This is a picture that I took from the event. I'm standing right out on the steps up there. It was pretty busy that day. About thirty-six hundred people attend throughout the afternoon. They had seventy-five display cars, which half of them were local to Monterey County. So, you know, that's good, you know, showing there. Room for improvement. I was told that we didn't have any power for any of the vendors that was near the PD side of the lot. They tried to pull from the tree boxes over there. So I work with public works next year. Just to make sure that those power boxes are active for them. From the organizer, they wanted to let us know that, you know, Concorde de Le Mans is a part of the fabric of Car Week now, you know, people have it as a must do, a must see when they come here. And so. We're happy to have them here on the city hall lawn and they'll enjoy having a free event for the community because as we know, there isn't very many free Car Week events. And this is one of those ones that, you know, everyone loves. It is quite a fun time over there. I saw one car that was turned to a barbecue. He was barbecuing. The public right, he's showing his car. So it was pretty cool. And some of them are interactive. The kids hop on and, you know, and see some of those. So it's really a good time. There's a couple of pictures from, you know, some of the best of the worst, if you will, from the Lemons. Concorde Italiano had about three thousand people attend, five hundred display cars. So this one has a little challenge. The event was almost canceled. Due to lack of funds and the ownership issue. They had a swap of ownership prior to the event. And I know they were having some challenges. I couldn't get any information from the organizer because they're no longer with the company anymore. But some of the information that I did find out was the gala the night before was canceled and the Italian eatery dropped out at the last minute. So they had to plug it. We had Black Horse Golf Course ended up catering the event. And, you know, I found that the person that actually took the lead is one of our own, Tanya Costa, who is with all in Monterey County. So. It was someone that is local to our community that actually stepped in and helped them make sure that that event went on. So we're looking at how this event is going to continue in the future and, you know, we'll have more information in the coming, the coming months. A couple of photos I got from that event. And then Exotics on Broadway. So Exotics have twenty-seven thousand people attend. I was able to get some data that gave me that number. With that data too, that shows a twenty percent increase from the year before. So that's, you know, we're seeing people coming to the city. They want to be here for that event. And we were lucky to have them. I mean, at twenty, oh, two hundred cars on display. Some of the rooms for improvement, parking and traffic. We know if you try to move around on the city during that day around that, it was parking lot out there. It was tough to get around. Traffic was an issue. One other thing is we discussed with the organizers is we've outgrown the footprint. It is, it's gotten too big for the. Broadway and half a Fremont T thing that we've had for the last two years. We were working with the organizers. They want to expand and I need to work with public safety to figure out what is that best way for expansion? Just to make sure that we have public safety taken care of and our community, you know, is best interested right here. So. This is a conversation we need to have in the near future so we can work with Exotics so they can, you know, come up with a plan for 2025. There were some concerns with the businesses. I know City Center had some issues and so we are working with them to address those issues. There was quite a bit of debris that was left and it took until Monday to clean up. So we understand that, you know, when you get twenty-seven thousand people coming to your street, it's going to be a little. A little more hectic and it's going to provide a little bit more waste and we definitely need to do better at doing that. And then there was food trucks in city center. So I was told that one of the local businesses. Called some food trucks to come on down. And so we'll be working with our economic development department and planning to make sure that that doesn't continue to happen. So we know that those restaurants on Broadway aren't affected by food trucks coming in. I do want to say to some of that other data that I got. From the attendees that came, was able to get that twelve percent of those attendees visited Meridisco's restaurant, which was the highest percentage. Followed by Buffalo Wild Wings. It also had twelve percent of those attendees attend those restaurants. It was more throughout the list. But the twelve percent, that was the highest where everyone was going. Eight percent of the attendees came from Seaside. Twenty percent came from ten miles away and then another thirty percent came between fifty and a hundred miles away. Large pockets of people came from Sacramento, Los Angeles, Chicago, DC and Arizona. So we were seeing people come from all over the country. Which is good and they're coming to Seaside and we get to showcase our city during that event. So a couple of things that we want to work on for next year is we want to finally identify ways to expand. I think we need to work closely with city center businesses to address some of those issues that we've had. This is kind of a repeat thing that we've had with a couple of those businesses in there. So we. Talked to them, we're on the right page. It seems like things continue to change the day. So we definitely need to address that. And we definitely need to have more public works staff onsite during the event. I think we only had four that day. And that just isn't enough to maintain with the amount of, you know, debris and help that they need to help with during the event. One thing we did this year was we had the alleyway on that's the public works courtyard side of the road closed, which helped a lot. To have people traveling in and out. It made for an easy accessible point for the public safety. And we were able to manage other people trying to sneak their way in with their vehicles. One thing that I saw more of this year was that a lot of those businesses were selling parking spaces. So they tried to sell parking spaces, but then we. Didn't allow access to the alley. So they were having issues with that. And then there were some businesses that. Couldn't access their business parking lot, which is in the alley. So while we had a few of their information, there were some that didn't contact us. So we weren't aware that they needed that. So we just need to work better with a lot of those businesses that do have parking lots on Broadway to make sure that they have that access. I think we definitely need to work on having more PD at the event as well as more security because the event is continuing to grow and twenty-seven thousand people. You know, six police officers and fifteen security guards. Really isn't enough. And I think we need to make sure that everyone's safety is there and just in the event that something, you know. Could happen. And then like it was mentioned at the prior council meeting, the city departments should be able and be a part of this event. So. We definitely want to make sure that we are highlighting our city, our departments, Recreation Department, Public Works Department, Community and Economic Development should have. A table there. So that way all the community that is coming can showcase where we are throughout the city, not just that event at that time. Couple of pictures here. As I conclude my presentation, I do want to just show a quick little drone video that was shot by the organizer where those can actually see. What the event looked like during and how many people were actually there. You don't need to show the whole thing, but you can kind of just kind of see just how it goes over where the people are, all the cars. It's quite spectacular when you see like from a distance too. There. It was a busy day out there for sure. And we couldn't have asked for better weather. I think that that was one of the hottest days we've had probably all summer and it was remarkable out there. So there's a lot of great cars. Kona Seg was the feature car. I think they had twenty Kona Segs there. A variety of other hypercars. It really was just a sight to see. And I know that the organizers are looking to come back. The one thing that I was told is that they have been approached by the golf course. And the fairgrounds to potentially go up there for their events. The thing is, is if they did leave us, those events would then become paid events and they would sell tickets. So. They like being the people's event, being here in Seaside. So. I would like to see if we can, you know, really come up and find a way to make sure that we can keep this here in Seaside any way possible. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
I just one quick comment before. I mean, they're free to go wherever they want to, right? So we're. That's. Your question.
Thank you for the report. I know I stepped in a little bit midway, but. I'm not sure if you really touched on this subject, but what was the hotel occupancy rate in Seaside?
I didn't look at that data. My kind of can see, but I would. Be confident that it was eighty-five to ninety-five percent.
One would hope so. What is the overall total revenue that came into our city that week? If we have those numbers and it's okay if we don't.
I don't have a sense for you there.
Don't worry. I know they're very complex questions. Maintenance on Broadway and cleanliness. What efforts did we do to have that area cleaned and what can we do better next year?
I know that public works went out a week before. They extra washed the sidewalks. They cleaned all the. The planner boxes and everything that goes along there. I do want to say we got to do better around the businesses. There is. A lot of transient occupancy in some of those businesses that do, you know, tend to have other types of. Smells and odors and things that come from that. And I noticed that personally walking through the streets. So. We definitely got to figure out a better way to address that prior and make sure that we don't have that issue again.
And when it comes to the, to the trash, would it be helpful to possibly, or could we see more trash cans?
I think we need more trash cans and we probably need some more service at the end of the event because. You can have all the trash cans you want, but I think if you don't have the larger. Things to put it at the end, that's going to be the issue.
And then for them potentially or other people scouting them, I'm hoping you are finding solutions to ensure that Seaside.
I definitely, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one question. Was there any feedback on the shuttle and the parking up top? I know it was a pretty massive line, like weight line. I'm just curious.
The one feedback we did get is that the shuttle wasn't moving fast enough. So they are looking at hiring two extra shuttles for next year. If that's, you know, they continued with the same location. One thing we tried to do is we tried to change the route. At one point to have it actually drop off on Del Monte instead of where it did because we didn't want a lot of people crossing the road. But the shuttle company itself said feasibly that wasn't, it would take them even longer to go down to Del Monte and they come back around. So they did address that, but they understand that they do need more shuttles because of the weight up there.
Anyone else? Just a quick, a couple comments. Yeah, I had a chance to speak to the organizer, the owner of it. And that's what we, what they were talking about is the lack of shuttle buses from, from up there. And, and they thought it was a good day. They had a good time and they look to come back next year, right? So. But my concerns were, you know, somebody speeding that was going on. And so we had to do a better job. So-called catching those folks. And then you talked about parking. So I just want to say to the residents, we appreciate their. Patience with the inability to park sometime because I think I left the house around eight o'clock. Eight thirty, it was already tight to get around the city. So. And then there were some skid marks in front of Porsche. It has to be some way to fix that. I know going to next year, we need to hold people accountable. But this year, I'm trying to figure out. But this year I'm trying to figure out how do we remove those type of, of marks? So you may not have answered now, but that's something we're going to have to solve because we, we just can't allow that to, to sit there for time immemorial until it fades away. And then about the the local owner of the Italiano, I think we should reach out the best we can and support to definitely try to make sure that stays in the hands of someone local. And maybe there's a way that the city can support them doing that. Cause I think it's a more of a nonprofit now. And it should be some type of ways that the city can make sure that we're part of Car Week besides just, and I think I shared this with everybody before, besides just allowing people to come out and take a permit. Right? We, we, we had to be integrated into Car Week. It has to be something we, we control as much as possible. City manager, you had anything or Dan you want to say?
Two things. Staff is taking a look at the, what's in front of the Porsche dealer and, and we have a, a plan for restoring it to its prior condition. And, you know, Car Week is becoming and should become a Seaside event. I mean, you know, people call it Monterey Car Week. It is moving. The center of mass is moving from Monterey to Seaside and that can only be positive for this community.
My thoughts exactly. All right. Thank you so much, Dan. Thank you for, I know it was a team of all the departments. And so we appreciate all the departments, police fire, park and red, public works, all you guys, finance, all you guys doing what you need to do to, like the city manager said, Seaside takes a rightful place in this car week thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda nine A approval minutes from September fifth, two thousand twenty four. And I'd be approve a proclamation designated September twenty third to September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four as storm water awareness week. C approve a fee waiver from the sustainable seaside for the use of Laguna Grande Hall for the candidates form on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty four for the November fifth, two thousand twenty four general municipal election. D approve a mayor's U fund contribution request from the Central Coast High School for a work to learn program. E adopt a resolution authorizing agreement with Seaside County Sanitation District for the reimbursement of construction costs for repairs to the sanitation sewer main in fiscal year two thousand twenty three pavement rehabilitation project. F adopt a resolution authorizing agreement with Seaside County Sanitation District for reimbursement of construction costs for the repairs to the sanitation sewer main in the Lincoln Cunningham Park Phase One arterial trail project. G adopt a resolution approving a professional service agreement with pavement engineer E to perform payment condition evaluation and update the payment management program for the amount not to exceed twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. H adopt a resolution for designation of voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo being held October sixteenth through the eighteenth two thousand twenty four in Long Beach, California. I adopt a resolution to cancel the October seventeenth, two thousand twenty four city council regular meeting. J adopt a resolution approving a five-year professional service agreement for property tax consulting audit services to HDL, Corin and Cone and the amount not to exceed seventy seven thousand eight hundred dollars and eighty nine cent. That concludes the reading of the consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone from the dais would like to pull? I, yes, I, I'm sorry. I, okay. Is there any item that anyone from the public would like? I'll just consider agenda.
H?
Uh, H?
Hotel.
Yes. No one from, okay, bringing it back to the dais. What is the will as a concerns of consent agenda? H and I is not on the consent agenda.
Move to prove the consent agenda.
Second. So probably moved to second, public comment on the consent agenda.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom. Please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone to make public comment on the consent agenda. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment on the consent agenda.
Thank you so much. And no one here, no one public comment is closed on the question. Autos in favor, use the recite voting, which is I.
I.
Naves have the same right. Eyes have it motion carry. Item number H, public comment is open on item number H, which is adopt a resolution for designation of voting delegates and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo being held October sixteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty four in Long Beach, California. Public comment is open.
Mr. Kaiser, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I think this is about seven hundred miles round trip. It's maybe going to take people three days to go there. I don't believe we need two people from this city council to go to those meetings. We should only have one go and we should not, like on item I, we should not cancel a meeting. That means there will be no city council meetings from the third of October until about the eighth of November, including the next general election. I believe we still need to have a meeting on the seventeenth of October. Not one city council meeting in that whole month. So let's just send one person and then we can have four members of the city council present with, for the meeting. And I think that would simplify. We, people can conduct normal business during that meeting. And we can still have a proper meeting with one person excused attendance to go to that Long Beach meeting. And we do need to know the cost of that for attendance, please.
Public camera remains open. Saying no one here, no one public comment is closed. City manager, you want to speak to the cost? Well, well, there's no cost associated with this action of appointing the, the delegates. Okay. Thank you. No, that's fine. There's no, there's no hollering out. Okay. Oh, okay. Let's see. I think more of the discussion about counseling the meeting is really an I, right? So we'll handle that and I. That makes sense. I have some comments and I, but this just clearly designate the, the representatives of the city that have the power to vote on resolutions and represents the city at this annual conference. And so to, to be clear, as it relates to whether designating a primary and alternate vote person, you know, you should do that and the city should participate in. And, and my, and my view is all five members of the council should be down there at this annual conference. Right? This, 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 this ideal somehow we are out of bounds by going down to this conference when we should be down there to learn and network and do everything else all the other city members do when they go down there. I think normally they have close to three thousand other elected officials from the city. So we won't be down, whoever goes down, it won't be down there alone. And this is an opportunity to network and learn and attend classes down there. It's, it's not just a, a, a happy joy ride for the people that attend this. So I, I just want to say that because I, I think here in Seaside, we, we got a kind of like, kind of like away from people attending this. And somehow that allows the citizens to deem it unnecessary. But as individual members, we choose to go or not go. But let's not, let's be clear. It's not a junket. And if you're not there, you are missing what's going on and you are missing out on opportunities to learn stuff and avail yourself of this information. But as a city, we can't make individual council members go. And so I don't want the, the community to believe somehow this is some type of junket where you're going to have fun. We, we work and, you know. All right, that's, that. What? No. Yeah, no, I'm gonna go, but did you? I couldn't. Okay. Why don't you, if you want to say something, why the city clerk comes up?
Definitely. I, I have to agree with you. I, I attended this California League of Conference roughly two years ago and there are key issues that are discussed that are critical to moving Seaside forward. Topics such as housing, infrastructure, parks and recreation. These are ideas and discussions that we can then bring back into our communities and implement. It also allows us the opportunity to interact with different cities and collaborate and see what other cities are doing, how it's working for them. Will it work for Seaside and get to meet people within politics, but also infrastructure and housing to get critical details. This is a, an extensive conference that allows us to learn and bring those results back to the city of Seaside.
Uh, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Dominic Davis, city clerk. For this item as well, if a city adopts a resolution to send a delegate to League of California, League of California Cities Conference, they must also appoint a alternate because the members do adopt statewide resolutions. And if Seaside does not send a delegate with an alternate, they will not be able to participate in the voting that goes on at that conference. They will only be able to attend and spectate.
And spectate, okay. Which, which is true. And I think, you know, I won't belabor the point, but I think council member Arizona said it exactly about the information they shared and the training that we go to. And I would just add out of the four hundred and eighty five cities, I think over four hundred and thirty are members of this organization. So we're, we're not alone in sending people. And maybe some cities, you know, they don't meet during that timeframe. And so I don't know whether they cancel their meetings or not, but this is very appropriate. So any other questions, comments? Was it moved a second? Okay. Do we have?
Move approval.
As a product moved a second, I mean, I, is, I mean, are we really having problems with this? Is that what we're saying? Autos in favor is direct assign a vote, which is I.
I.
And naves have the same right. I would say that the, the cost associated with attending this is public knowledge and it's, you know, so we can give you those numbers once we have a good grasp on who's going and what it costs to actually, what is it? Register. Okay. All right. Uh, let's move to item number I, which is adopt the resolution to cancel the October seventeenth, two thousand twenty four city council regular meeting. Council member Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October seems to be a big month for us and with two people gone, we still could potentially have a meeting with three people, three members of the city council. And because we're coming up to really important things on our agenda tonight and moving forward in October, at this time I cannot support us canceling the October seventeenth meeting. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not sure exactly what you mean by October is a big month for us. And then, of course, I wouldn't be part of somehow canceling a meeting if we had three members attended a meeting.
So unfortunately or fortunately, I'm a full-time principal and I've been asked to attend a training during that same exact week. So because of that, I'm not able to be here.
I would say for the citizens of Seaside, that's, that's fortunately, you know, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, it's not the first meeting we cancel. So public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom. Please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Mr. Kaiser, Mayor, City Council. An alternative suggestion, I move that you change the date of the meeting so that it will not conflict with your two-day conference or even Congress, I mean, Councilwoman Burke's meeting, change the date of the meeting. So we still have two October official city council meetings with possibly everybody who's supposed to be here, be here. Because I, like I said, we'll be changing the city council soon. We'll have new members on the city council. We'll have newly elected members in Seaside on the fifth of November. So I think we need to have two normal city council meetings on October. Thank you.
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hello, my suggestion was going to be a special meeting, at least to go over at the second reading of I think two business items that we may be listening today. I'm not particularly sure. So if you can correct me on that, but a second meeting in October, either in a special capacity or an alternative date for the one that is supposed to be on the seventeenth of October. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Diane Nielsen, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I would like to echo the last two persons who spoke. I would suggest a special meeting because November, December uh, seems to be a pretty busy time for people. And I, I think there's a time in December that you don't meet. So I think a special meeting would be in order and I'd really appreciate that. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
I thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Now, what is the will of the council?
Motion to approve item I.
I'll, I'll second it. Own, own the question.
Own the question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I think you missed, thank you to Councilmember Burks. I was not aware that she's not available that, that evening. But I, I still have to stick to my, my decision to vote knowing this because I do believe that we should have a special meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
I would be fine with having a meeting on October twenty fourth. It's up to the dais as a whole, as a special meeting.
Let me jump in. Special meeting is not on the agenda.
Okay.
Right? That's the problem. Three of us will not be here for the seventeenth. So we're canceling the meeting. That has nothing to do with whether we can have a special meeting before or after. And so to go straight to, well, if you cancel the meeting, then you need to have a special meeting. The special meeting question is not on this. We're not here on the seventeenth. This is nothing unusual. Canceling the meeting. Just like it would be nothing unusual to have a special meeting. But to have a meeting, just to say you're having a meeting when the city manager is not saying, well, we have a lot to do, so we need to have a special meeting. That's, that's my, that's my comments. It's, it's kind of like this thing just took, took a turn for some reason. And so if you support canceling the meeting, then say I. Autos in favor, you say reg sign vote, which is I.
All right.
Naves have the same right. No. So what is that? What is that, city clerk?
Motion passes four to one.
Okay. All right. And so just to be clear, you know, like we always do, we'll work with the city manager and if there's a need for a special meeting, then we would do that. But sitting here on, what is it? uh, then we would do that. But sitting here on, what is it? What is today? September the nineteenth? To talk about what we're going to do thirty days from now is a little bit hinky to me. We haven't even had the meeting in October yet. And it just seemed, okay, that's too much. All right. Uh, business item number ten A. Consider amendment to consider many amendment to to the purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of the Campus Town property. Approve the exchange of properties and make appropriate findings, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Attorney has this one and the next one.
Thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager and Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. I get queued up here. Screen. So I'm, I will be presenting tonight, item ten A, which is to consider the Second Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement for the acquisition of the Campus Town property, the property exchanges um and making appropriate findings. So by way of background, um, the initial purchase and sale agreement was executed on February sixth, two thousand seventeen. And unfortunately, you know, development projects aren't always as smooth as everybody would like, and there were some delays caused by lawsuits, regulatory review, some other things. And this council approved a First Amendment on January twenty-six, twenty twenty-two to address some of the initial delays, and now we've had some additional changes with respect to the city's decision to retain the fire station um property. And also by way of background, that's not to say the project has been stagnant this whole time. Things have been happening. In preparation for the development of Campus Town phases, the final map for Phase One A was approved by the council on June of two thousand twenty-two. We, the developer and the city staff have been working on improvement plans so that when the property starts to change hands, they can hit the ground running and start to put the improvements in that are required for the development. The city has demolished some buildings on site. And the master architectural plans have been approved by our building department to help smooth the way for a seamless development process. There are some other things that I that I'm not mentioning, I'm sure I'm forgetting, but but things have been happening, and I just wanted everybody in the public to know that everybody, the developer and the city staff, are committed to moving this project forward as seamlessly as we possibly can. So what does the Second Amendment address? Well, the Second Amendment addresses some big picture items. It addresses the property exchange between the fire station and the rest of the project. It addresses easements and things that need to be acquired and called out to make the project happen smoothly. It addresses some potential park uh planning and changes that might happen there with the acquisition of certain properties. And finally, it commits KB to the full build-out of transportation improvements um at the intersections of General Gym, in particular, General Gym and Light Fighter, and it also confirms the public benefit um contribution. You can see there the picture of the old Presidio Fire Station there on the right. It's building forty-four ten. That's the original four-door um fire station. So this is a map which shows the and I'm going to try to zoom in. This is my new technique, maybe. Or maybe not. Oh, I was by fucking. This shows a map, a graphic of the um exchanges of the properties here. So outlined in the blue area is the Phase One A, that will be the first part of the project which is acquired. You can see where the intersection improvements are, and in this area, right? I don't know why it won't. Best laid plans, not sure why it's not in margin like it's supposed to. There we go. Ah, there's a tool. Um, this shows where the fire station is located, and it shows generally the blue square, which is the diet, the former Diocese parcel. Um, it's a one acre of fire station, and the KBB team will get one point one six acres of the uh diocese parcel. Um, this also graphically shows where the original park was planned or is planned. The blue square in the lower uh right-hand corner, and it shows the MST uh parcel, which right now has a deed restriction on it that precludes the use for residential use. So um if the city is successful at acquiring that property, the idea here is that there would be an exchange. The um MST parcel would be improved as a transit-oriented park, so we would still be getting a park, and the um exchange would allow the residential units to be moved down in the lower right-hand um corner. So used to saying next slide, it's uh, this is a map which shows generally where the easements are for the um that need to be acquired. And the biggest uh issue here is, well, it's not an issue, but the 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 drainage area at the end is um gosh, all right. Um, okay, that didn't work out so well. Anyway, this shows comprehensively where all the different easements are across the uh project. And um that is it. We're requesting that the council adopt a res- a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Amendment Agreement.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, on the question. Squon.
Yes, go ahead.
This is very, I'm sure I misheard you. Uh, did you say that the park wasn't for resident use, or is that?
Thank you for that question. That's a really good question, and maybe I wasn't clear. Right now, the specific plan shows residential use on the uh property. Let me go up to that slide here. On that property on the right-hand side, whoops, on the right-hand side, which is the MST property um in green, it's the far-right green square. That property was transferred to the uh MST as a public benefit conveyance, and it is restricted to only transportation-oriented uses, which do not include, the Federal Highway Administration does not include residential reuse in that uh the use of that property. So the idea here is that we would improve that property as a transit-oriented park, and the KBB team is agreeing to put in improvements to that park if we are successful at acquiring it from the MST agency. Um, that would entail um parking, solar uh solar panels, uh the electric vehicle chargers, uh you know, it's still to be determined exactly what the active park uses would be, but the idea would be that we would have a collection of transit-oriented improvements that would complement also the park use as well.
Just one last one, and I'm, I'm sorry. I for this project for all along. Uh, but um, so you're, what you're saying in that whole area, there with, I assume numerous houses, you're not having any with numerous families, numerous kids, you're not having any parks for kids to use. Is that what we're saying? And and that's fine. I just, that's a little disappointing if I heard you correctly.
No, that I thank you for that question. Just to clarify my comments, the transit-oriented park would be a park. There would be park amenities as part of the open space part of the park. But the two edges
Okay.
of the park would be improved with transit-oriented um improvements, a bus stop, um solar panels with electric charging stations, for example, things that complement transit-oriented, that meet the definition of the Federal Highway Administration's definition for transit-oriented development.
Thank you, I think.
It's it's a park with a fancy parking lot.
And and my understanding, that's just one of the many parks in this development, so the concern of it not having any parks, I'm I'm not sure. Uh, but to be clear, this has more than enough parks for the residents. This is an additional parcel we were able to get. But to get it, it has to stay within a certain use and a certain uses that transit-oriented. But that doesn't mean it doesn't have grass, it won't, kids won't be able to play out there and and all the other things. Are there any other questions? Uh, I guess we have the the developer here, if he wants to say anything, Mr. Uh, Bakewell.
Hi, my name is Danny Bakewell, Jr., with the uh KB Bakewell uh Development Team. Just to address, because I've had numerous conversations previously. Really what we've done, Dave, and and members of the public and everyone, is originally there was housing design on that green space, and there was a park on the blue space. I'm just going. We've essentially flipped it. That's all we've done. So our vision for that park is a miniature soccer field area with a parking lot where people will park. Those parking lots will have charging stations. They will probably have some type of solar canopy over those parking stations, similar to what you have in the parking lot here. So it will be a transit-oriented park available for the public. It will have grass. It will have public use and public benefits as part of the park. All we've essentially done is flipped the two, the park to housing and housing to the park. And we will work with the city, city staff, city council to design a, the best possible park in that transit-oriented space. So that's really how this all came about.
Real quick. Thank you very much. That really from a very confused item. And that's what we've been talking about for years. That clarifies it because you have countless residents in there, and they should have a place with kids. And I think it's very important, your explanation has a very much value to the residents' community and your development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Diane Nielsen, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
I'm sorry, that was my mistake. I never lowered my hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
You so much. Public comment is closed. What is the will of the council?
Move approval.
As we probably moved a second, hold a second. I have a question.
We've been working with the Baker, uh, and the Baker Company for eight to ten years on this project, and from day one, the residents were prioritizing you, your business is the to be a Seaside star because of your commitment back to the community and the uh the partnership, the cooperation of recognizing the need for community activities, parks, walkable areas is uh very valuable to the city of Seaside, and I'm glad uh you were able to clarify uh something simple that we've been talking about for feels like a decade. So thank you very much.
Hi, anyone else had any uh comments? I I do think this is a a good uh a resolution to move forward. This is a continuation of of moving this project forward. I I want to thank the uh city manager, when he was here before, on his work with this developer uh to move it forward and to uh in my opinion, make it a a a more walkable community, and and we just look forward to this development and uh you know, we, this is just a small step. We got stuff to do, but I don't know how many times we go around the community saying Campus Town is a game changer for the city of Seaside, so I'm just going to say it right now, it's a game changer, and so we want to do what we can to make it better. Uh, and so, so I probably moved the second, uh, on a question. All those in favor is red a sign of voting, which is aye.
Aye.
And they just have the same right. Eyes have it. Motion carried. Uh, thank you so much. We'll move on to item ten B, consider amendment to the Affordable Housing Agreement with KBB uh Seaside Ventures LP for a portion of the Campus Town development. Uh, Madam City Attorney.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Uh, tonight, um, I will be presenting item ten B to consider an amendment to the Affordable Housing Agreement with the KBB Seaside Venture Two for a portion of the Campus Town development. By way of background, the initial Affordable Housing Agreement was approved for Campus Town um on March fifth, two thousand twenty, and um it is and it has an alternative for compliance with the uh Seaside's in uh inclusionary housing ordinance. And of course, as we discussed at the last item, changes have happened since the initial Affordable Housing um program. And um tonight, we are updating the initial Affordable Housing Agreement with an amendment to help clarify some of those and address some of those changes. So it was adopted on three five. There were two hundred and twenty-five original affordable units. They were located on and off-site. Um, there were deed restrictions and other provisions. That's what your initial Affordable Housing Agreement included. Let me show you quickly the table which captures in graphic form this agreement. And I know this is a very small table. It's not really meant for analysis other than to say that it is a part of the agreement and outlines the various phases, and you can tell by the stripes on this graph, the phasing of the project. So this was your initial initial plan. Since that time, we've tried to clarify the Affordable Housing Agreement, and it clarifies who the builder of the affordable units will be. It identifies the proportionate share of the units that'll be built by the KBB team. It identifies locations for the off-site units and the details, some of the details for the when and the how of and the timing of those off-site for-sale units. And then, of course, there are some other provisions, and the standard provisions carry forward in this amended agreement. So here is a general map of where some of those affordable housing units would be located. One is on Hill Killby, sorry. And you can see the pop-out there to show the lots that are across from the Chili's Lot. That's going to be able to accommodate approximately fifteen affordable for-sale moderate-level units. The moderate level is at a hundred and twenty percent of the um area median income. The other site for the for-sale units is on Hillby, adjacent to the Old Meyer Center. That parcel, those two parcels will accommodate approximately eight for-sale um units, and they will also be of moderate level. So moderate level again is a hundred and twenty percent of uh adjusted median income and the anticipated sales price, and I'm just going to give a note here because actual sales price will vary at the time of completion because the moderate level affordability, the income levels change every year with the federal government, and interest levels change every year with changes in the economy. And so until you have those two variables, you can't actually calculate the for-sale pricing, but it's anticipated to be in the range of approximately you know, four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new home at the moderate level. That's the anticipation. So here is the new um table that, and again, I understand this in microtype. I'm going to try to zoom in. See if I can get it to zoom in. There we go. A little bit. So this shows the um come on, baby. come on, baby. There we go. This shows the column, first column shows the phase of which phase the units will be built in. The second um, column shows the general location, if it's going to be offsite or onsite. So this is one of those where the offsite units for the rental units are going to be built at Greater Victory Temple. Try and move the slide over. In any case, the next column shows the uh, rental um, ownership type, whether it's going to be a rent or a for sale unit. Um, the total number of units in the first phase will be 241 units. And the affordable units will be 25, total 21 built offsite at the very low uh, level and four at the moderate um, level. It goes through the entire table and I'm not going to go through the entire table, but the entire table shows is an attachment to this amended agreement. And it shows the general phase, the location, whether it's an onsite unit, an offsite unit, the total number of units that will be built in the project um, and the amount of affordable housing and what level of affordability those affordable units will be built at. So here is an overall summary for the entire project. The KBB Seaside Venture Two LLC is only purchasing a portion of the property. And of the unit, of the parcels that they're purchasing, their development projection is 1,180 residential units, total units. Of those, 180 of those will be affordable. This table shows that 60 of those will be very low, 61 will be low and 59 will be at the moderate level. Um, what you see on the right hand side of this table is an equivalency factor that is provided for in the Seaside Municipal Code Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And what that ordinance allows is if you build a very low unit, it qualifies as a two for one. So for every one very low, you get a credit of two, which is why you see on the right hand side that the equivalent percentage of affordable housing that's being produced here is 22.59, which meets the 20% requirement for our inclusionary housing ordinance. And in the total specific plan, there are projected to be 1,485 units. 241 of those will be affordable. Which is, um, and then the equivalency uh, prong is 24 point I can't see it there, 24.1% of the um, overall equivalency is what the effective affordability will be for the entire specific plan. So the difference between 1,485 and 1180, those units are being built by on parcels that currently are projected to be owned by others in the specific planning area. So this is a a picture of the Seaside Apartments. And as I mentioned before, um, the KBB team has has been working diligently to get this project ready for hitting the ground running. These were, are the Greater Victory Temple Apartments. They have gone through design review and it's not a typographical error. They were um, submitted and approved, I believe, on September 19th, 2023. Um, even though we're in 2024, it's coincidence. Um, but here's a, this will be 21 units of very low um, apartments. Uh, the anticipated rental price as of this year for, based on this year's uh, affordability levels of income is about $1,325 for a single uh, one person apartment rental. And with that, uh, the request is that we adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the Affordable Housing Agreement.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any questions?
No, yes, sir.
Just real quick, because I know some residents on Canyon Del Ray were concerned above on Trinity. Are those going to be two or three story or one story? Just because I know they would like to know.
Thank you for that question. Um, I think, uh, while the developer is here, I don't know that the plans have been fully vetted. I think there is a concept plan out there which identifies conceptually a site plan which would allow 15, 15 units onsite.
If you don't know, it's fine. I'm I'm good.
And those plans will come forward.
Yeah, the conceptually, I'm sorry.
If they don't have the answer, just get back with me, Mr. Baker. I'm fine. Just that way, I know some residents over there are concerned.
Uh, Councilmember Miller. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it was kind of hard to see with that small slide. What was the total number of affordable housing units that we're we're going to be adding to our city?
With the entire buildout of Campus Town, 241.
241 uh, uh, units.
Total, total, when all of the units with the KBB um, project, it's 180 additional affordable, uh, 180 affordable units.
I understand because one of our biggest issues here uh, is housing and and the affordability of housing. So kudos to you guys for having so many units. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Mr. Kaiser, Mayor, City Council, um, I'm hoping we're applying common sense to this. This has been going on for seven years and we're still micromanaging the developer, telling him how many percentages of what price houses to build. Now, if this was owned by the city of Seaside and by and and managed, that's something else. This is supposed to be a private development. And let's apply some common sense. In other words, let's say he wanted to build mainly um, higher, higher um, priced homes. So let's say he builds them all higher priced. And what that means is in Seaside, those people who are living moderate homes have gotten more income. So they're going to go buy those houses right up. And then the people in moderated and the people in the lower end can move to the moderate income and the lowest income. So they just move up. So we don't really have any business telling him what to build, how to build and what prices and have deed restrictions. So why don't we just leave him alone? He builds what he thinks the market will bear, just like we're building very expensive homes at the bottom of the golf course. I drove through there and they had gates and huge houses and all this. So let's, let's just back off. In other words, a bunch of businesses are leaving California. They're going to Nevada. They're going to Texas. Some of the biggest businesses are leaving San Francisco. A lot of vacancies because we have a legislature who wants to micromanage even this city and you guys are fighting it even. The city micromanaged by Sacramento. So let's, let's leave, let's leave this gentleman to build whatever he wants to build, however he wants to build it. And he think he'll do the market studies and they're probably going to sell and whoever, and then they just move up, lower income to moderate. Doesn't that make sense in America?
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Out of the 224, I think, total that we mentioned, 188 was going to be affordable. How many of those are going to be actually built on the Campus Town uh, property? I also have a question. When you say moderate income, is that the 120 of the HCD published AMI? I just want to be clear on that. Um, that's a starting household size of 86,700 income for one bedroom. And then all the way to 133,750 income for a five bedroom. Also, when we talk about that 21 uh, units on Victory Temple, this was the same parcel that was rezoned for this. And during that time last year, we were told that nothing has been decided, nothing has been um, put in place or designed as far as how many units and the size of levels would be done. And here we are a year later, as our city attorney so kindly pointed out, there was already plans in place. That's not transparent. Now, when we talk about how many units, my understanding was 21. So are, is it one level, two level, three level? That's something you should already know now, since these plans were approved, 2023, conceptual, meaning we have an idea of what that would look like. So we'd like it to be transparent. Now, let us know, is it two story, three story, 21 units or 18 units? I have the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Uh, thank you. Public comment is closed. Uh, City Attorney, any questions or issues or concerns you're going to answer at this time?
Uh, yes, thank you. So the Greater Victory Temple approval was approved through a public process. It was done in pursuit and after the initial affordable housing plan. Um, there's still additional work that will need to be done on that project, um, which it's just been through architectural review. So it's 21 units of very low. This agreement is going to deed restrict those units to very low income. Um, that's uh, very low income for a household size of one is $46,350 as of this year. It could change in the future. So that's the, those are the uh, and then with respect to moderate level income, moderate level does vary as the speaker um, pointed out based on household size for income levels. But at this point, the for sale housing units, we will not be able to determine what those income levels will be or what the purchase prices will be for those units because that will happen at the time they are completed. When they're completed, we will know what H, which HUD, the Housing and Urban Development uh, federal government sets as the moderate income levels. This year, those levels for a single uh, one person household size are 86,700. And for a four person household size, it would be 123,850 dollars. Those are the income levels right now. That's not what the acquisition price of a moderate level affordable unit would be.
Uh, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in the past, when I purchased a home and when I've seen other people purchase homes, what happens when you go to buy a house is you have the house appraised. And when you have a house appraised, the best way to have a house appraised is to look at comparable houses and what they sell for. So in a city such as ours, when a developer comes and makes one point five or two million dollar homes, whatever the price may be, that all the other homes in the city then reflect and go higher because of that comparison. So when you talk about going from median to higher, to a higher priced home, that actually uh, does not equate properly because when you go to do the comps of a, of a newer home, when you have a development, it raises the price of all the homes in Central Seaside and it grows, it outgrows our community and uh, makes us uh, what we are not. So those are all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Proton.
Just, I just wanted are we men, uh, City Attorney, are we mandated by city, by law, let's say by law, to have affordable housing?
Through the mayor? Yes, thank you for that question. It's a great question. Yes, there are two, there, there's actually two laws. When this project initially started, we had the four door reuse authority was in existence. There was a 20% mandate. It came through both the state legislature and the local four door reuse authority regional organization. In addition, the city redevelopment law has a 20% affordability requirement for all redevelopment projects. And lastly, the Seaside Municipal Code sets forth a 20% target for affordability.
Yeah, and and that's my, kind of sort of my point. Um, Mr. Baker has been a partner with this city, has known this for the past 10 years. It's something that they'd be required to do and encouraged to do and want to do. Um, because he's a, a fan of Seaside as both the dad and the son have said. Uh, so I I just wanted to point that out. It's long term. It's a known law. Everybody's aware of it. Now we're going to make it happen sooner, sooner rather than later, very sooner than later. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? I I'll just add to that because I was going to mention it myself. So thank you for the excellent comments, Mayor Proton. I think the requirement for uh, uh, low income um, housing development within a large development, that that may be 30, 35 years old, right? If not 40 year old requirement. I mean, I, you know, so it's nothing new for us. We're not, we're not causing them no pain. Uh, they know that's the cost of of what they want to develop. So I just want to be clear about that. That's, that's not only is the law that requires we need to have it, it's been on the books for about close to 40 years, if not longer. Uh, and then for me, uh, if it wasn't, I mean, we're, we have to build affordable housing for people that need affordable housing. And right now, the way to do it is allow developer to build market rate. We had these conversations before. And the thing is, how do we build more of these affordable units without necessarily uh, it only being 20% of of the whole, you know, uh, but that's a different conversation. So uh, what is the will of the council?
Can I make a motion to approve 10B second?
Has been probably moved to second on the, uh, public comment is open. I think we had it already, right? So, okay. I just want to be sure. We don't want to have to go back on this, right? I don't want the attorney to say we we skipped something. So uh, on the question, all those in favor, use the record sign of voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Now you have the same right. Here none, eyes have it, motion carry. Uh, 10C, provide feedback on a potential draft ordinance modifying the allowing number of cannabis dispensaries and making other changes to the operation or selection of cannabis dispensaries within the city of Seaside. Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Economic Development Community Planning Manager is returning um, to discuss this topic again with the uh, City Council, um, following the council's direction at the last time. We talked about it.
You, City Manager, um, Mayor, City Council, um, as the City Manager just mentioned, um, this is coming back after the previous meeting which we had. That is not my presentation. There we go. Yes, my presentation. Okay. All right. So as we've mentioned before, um, the city of Seaside has regulations adopted to uh, um, regulate the establishment and operation of cannabis dispensaries. This ordinance was last updated in 2021. Um, there's been a number of changes over the years. Originally, three dispensaries were allowed and then that number was changed to six. And then in 2021, that number was changed to nine. Um, however, even though nine are allowed at this point, only six have actually opened. So at this point, we have six dispensaries operating. We currently have no pending applications for dispensaries. And because of the council's action in August, um, we also will not be accepting any applications without council's approval ahead of time. This just shows the locations of the existing dispensaries. So three with the blue triangles that are located within the West Broadway Urban Village. And then we have three with, which are the red triangles, which are located more or less along Fremont Street. So i- in taking with our council's direction, we took a look at the uh, number of dispensaries and asked what is the right number of dispensaries? And there's not really a right or wrong answer to that. It's really just sort of um, a judgment call. So what staff did is we took a look at uh, four other jurisdictions nearby that also allow for cannabis dispensaries. We looked at Delray Oaks, Marina, Monterey and Salinas. Um, and then we basically took the population and the size of those dispensaries and then broke it down to number of dispensaries. broke it down to number of dispensaries per thousand population and a number of dispensaries per square mile. The actual numbers for those stats don't really matter. There's no ideal number of dispensaries per thousand population. But what it does do is allows for a comparison between different jurisdictions. So you can see looking at the chart that Delray Oaks is at point 628, which is significantly higher than the other jurisdictions, mainly because Delray Oaks is very small. And Salinas is at point 031, which is much smaller because Salinas is very large. And then Marina and Monterey are actually very close population wise. And then if you do the same analysis per square mile, you see the same thing. Delray Oaks very high, Salinas very low, Marina and Monterey kind of in the middle. If you look at where Seaside is, and this is based on the allowed number of dispensaries, Seaside is significantly higher. It's more than twice as much per population as Marina and Monterey. And it's more than, it's the highest out of all of them, double to three times what the other jurisdictions, when you compare the, the size. And so nine dispensaries is definitely more than other jurisdictions allow, with the exception of Delray Oaks, which again is a very small jurisdiction. To try to figure out how many dispensaries would be ideal, we took Salinas and Delray Oaks out because those are very small, very large. That left us with Marina and Monterey, which are actually rather similar to Seaside in terms of size. And you can see that population wise, they're at about point 13,000, between point 33 and point 46 per square mile. Currently, Seaside, if you look at what nine is, were very high. The existing number of six is still higher than the other two jurisdictions have. The closest number to what the other jurisdictions have, which will basically provide a level of consistency, is four dispensaries. And so the draft language that you have before you would change them of dispensaries that are allowed within the city from nine to four. That would be too fewer than are currently existing. So any dispensaries that are already operating would be allowed to continue to do so. As long as they are operating within the, you know, parameters that they were approved under. So in other words, comply with the terms of their development operating agreement, the use permit, the city code, et cetera. And then over time, through attrition, the number could go down to the four after some of them close over time. Transfers would be allowed. So if someone has an existing dispensary and they want to sell it to another party, that would be allowed with council approval. Some other provisions that are in here, a few other cleanup items. So the code was amended to require community benefit program. That was included in the application procedures before, but this would add it to the ordinance itself. It also would require that businesses perform live scan background checks on all the employees and maintain records of that, that the city could look at in the future. And then some other cleanup and clarification items that are kind of more housekeeping things. So staff's recommending that the city council review the materials and provide feedback.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any questions? Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we go to four and we have six, so if one of them just stops doing business like we just recently had, and then are they, would they be able to reopen back up? Or would they need to come back to the council?
They would have a, a window of time to reopen. But if they didn't reopen within that window, then it, their approvals would lapse. And then that would be, that would be it. And the other thing to bear in mind is that you would not be able to have another person come in and assume the business without council approval because development operating agreements are unique to the operator themselves. If that makes sense.
Okay. So then somebody, it could be a, a business owner could be at the, the edge of saying, well, if I close or I'm going to lose my permit, you know, forever because we're not, we possibly couldn't issue another one. That could be a hard position to put them in. But I appreciate the, the report and I, I think four is a, is a good number for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Portem.
You said that, I believe you said, we could, they, the business owner could transfer ownership to another, to another owner to be.
With council approval.
With, could we, if the council chose, could they say, once you transfer, you're done? You know, that property would be used for, I don't know, a bookstore or whatever it be. Is that possible?
Right. So one of the purposes of having the council approval is because you have to look at the new operators. The, the most important thing as for these businesses is who's operating it. So if the council wasn't comfortable with the proposed operator, then they are not obligated to approve any requests for a transfer.
Or, or we're not happy with the proposed operator or thought there would be another wouldn't, wouldn't be in that location, would not be good for the residency Seaside as a whole.
The council is not obligated to provide a reason for denial.
And then the, you know, personally, I think three would, the original concept of three was, to me, was a really wise decision that we veered from and I was part of the veering. So my question is though, let's say it is four or, or three or doesn't really matter, a magic number of three or four. Then how about Campus Town or, I don't know, East Seaside or whatever? Could they, could Campus Town get a, a business owner to open a Campus Town? If, if we had four inside Seaside or four on the internal Seaside?
No, because it's for the entire city. And so unless the number of dispensaries had dropped below four and there was an availability there, they wouldn't be able to do that.
So just trying to spread the wealth, just, and I'm just thinking out loud, so I apologize. So let's say we lowered it to three, I mean, or lowered it to four. And I'm not sure how to phrase this, but the internal part of Seaside, that, you know, the heart of Seaside, I guess, would be potentially three with the opportunity for someone to build on Campus Town or East Seaside or wherever it be. Because that's a whole different portion of Seaside. And if somebody wants to open a business rather than, it just spreads out the, the wealth of marijuana shops or whatever dispensaries. Is that a possibility to tweak it where we're not closing off the four because it doesn't allow potentially for Campus Town? Or bring it to four, three in the heart of Seaside and one on the outside? Just, is there any, for lack of a wiggle room there? Like Campus Town or whoever, new part of Seaside would have the opportunity, at least one in that section. Just thinking.
So we, we could make some modifications to the ordinance to allow some flex. So the way that that I could envision that working would be council would essentially create the, the, the slot, so to speak, and then direct staff to accept applications. Then we would accept applications for a particular portion of the city. I mean, we, I, I would make a few tweaks to the ordinance before bringing it back in order to, to do, if, if that was the direction of the council. But I, I could see how the council could essentially set up a geographically limited availability for a dispensary within a certain portion of the city. Because I, I understand what you're saying.
Good, because I was having a hard time sharing that thought. I just think to close ourselves off to four or three or two and not be inclusive of other parts of growth in the city, something that we might want to consider based on your potential tweaking of the ordinance as such. That's it. Thank you so very much.
Anyone else? Any comments? You said no or yes? No? I had a couple. Thank you for the work on this. That's something we've been trying to get back to is how do we articulate and, and shut this thing down? You know, like the mayor Portim said, when we first started, it was just three and I used to call them golden tickets. And then all of a sudden, you end up with nine, right? You know, it's split between, what was it? Recreational and with the doctor's note, right? And so that's how it got to that number. But, but I'm, I'm supporting knocking it all the way down to three, if not two. All right. But we know people are grandfathered in, so that's not a concern right now. I just want to get this number down to four. We, you know, councils afterwards can figure out how to, how to get it down a little bit lower. Because I think you, you did a good job of showing that it's more than enough. Those are my comments. All right. Thank you so much. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Peter Kaiser. I'm very glad to hear this conversation. I've been promoting the reduction for a long time. I think nine was way too many. And we might even want to go below four, down to three. And as these shops close, maybe just go down to two or one or none. I think we need to know the background on the situation of the science on marijuana. Just like the tobacco industry had propaganda, even doctors promoting the use of tobacco years ago. They had a really good propaganda machine. Well, the marijuana industry has the same machine going. They talk about medical marijuana and all this. Well, Alex Berensen, who's a very good journalist and has written a number of books, he has an article in January 2019, I think I passed this around to you on time or mentioned it, Tell Your Children The Truth About Marijuana, Mental Illness and Violence. He was writing this story and he was at home and he asked his wife, who's like a psychologist at a state mental hospital, if any of these violent offenders who were in the state mental hospital, basically a prison, had used marijuana. I think she kind of laughed and she said, they all used marijuana, all of them, she said. So this is a gateway drug. If you talk to some people who, one pastor at a political conference, they were talking about legalization of marijuana and he said, he had abused drugs, street drugs and so forth. And he said, a, a number of people that he knew did use marijuana initially as a gateway drug. And he was opposed, as, as I believe, to this open, open state for this whole thing. And I also understand there's a, there's a county called Mano Poza. I don't think they have any marijuana shops. So my understanding is, you know, you are not forced as a city to have any marijuana shops. And we don't want to be promoting drug abuse or even alcohol abuse in this city. And I worked 22 years at Fort Ord to teach the soldiers how to avoid alcohol and drug abuse. So check the article out, Alex Berensen, Tell Your Children The Truth About Marijuana, Mental Illness and Violence. And this is a wonderful idea. Let's, let's go from nine to four to three to two to maybe as they close their businesses, not be allowed to transfer it over, but just have those shops closed because we don't want to promote drug abuse or alcohol abuse or anything like that in the city of Seaside. And I think this is a great move forward. Thank you.
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
So my question is with regards to expenses that the city has acquired due to the six that we currently have. And by, by expenses, I mean our police and fire, if there's been any incidents in any of these locations. And then when we talk about growth, I know PG is considering or Monterey, one of those cities is considering bringing more dispensaries into their city. So if we bump it down to four and those four have grandfathered in out of the six, and one of them wants to move over to that new development on Campus Town, how are we going to mediate that? And why the consideration wasn't for the six we already have instead of lowering it down to four, specifically if we're going to be building out past Campus Town? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Anne, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
My concern is with this new ordinance that they're asking for the live scan. So is that to say that prior to this ordinance being adopted, that we didn't know who was running these dispensaries or who was employed by these dispensaries? I'm just curious of what brought that part up. Yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Public comment is closed. City manager or, is my, are there any questions, issues or concerns you can answer at this time?
Sure. On the live scans, we did do live scans for all of the principals of the businesses back when they originally got their, their permits. We are in the process of putting together, basically doing a review of all the existing businesses, looking, ensuring that they've been in compliance. So we're looking to see whether or not they've kept that up as time has gone on. And if not, then we're going to have to make sure that that gets reinstated. And I am not aware of there being any particular issues with any dispensaries that have necessitated the city spending a lot of money on enforcement or police or fire. And then the, and the reason that we didn't recommend six at this point was simply because that would be more than what other jurisdictions nearby are allowing. And also with other jurisdictions adding dispensaries, there may not be a need for as many dispensaries as we had previously.
Okay. Could you, I have a question that, that, how did we get to nine? I hear nine. I'm just trying to figure out how did we get to nine? Because I, I wasn't, you know, I looked at you, David, because I don't remember. I don't remember ever supporting nine. But I do remember it was original three. And when it first was approved, you know, you split the three in half because you had authorization for a recreational. And then the law changed and it, it became legal for everybody, right? You didn't have to have a doctor's note, right? That's how I got to six. Can you, can you help me?
Well, I, I know exactly how it went from, how it went from three to six. Because in my first go around here, I only missed one council meeting. I think, I think it was December 28th. I forget, I forget what year it was.
2017.
Yeah, 2017, December 28th, 2017. I only missed one council meeting back in Iowa. And, and it, and it went to the council with three. And, and, you know, the next morning I, I called around and said, to see how, how the meeting went. And he said, they went to six. I'm like, oh, okay. They're just, you were in the holiday spirit. That's how it went from three to six. The council was in the holiday spirit.
You know, that's what they do, but I was just trying to, you know, let the public know, we were not just the way it's nine, just yeah, nine, right? But that just went down, right? We, we were not just pushing up. And so now, now this is, you know, how do we wrap back some of those permits? And I think they did a great job getting these there, down to four, you know, I'm looking at you, I can't get that down to three, but that's not what's on James right now. And so what is the will of the council? Any more questions, comments?
And you're absolutely right. That's what I mentioned, three. And then we tried to make everybody happy and there was like 20 applications and we were trying to compromise. And that's how it got to this, in the simplest of terms. And I was, on my part, I'm mistaken. My question was back in, as we were doing dispensaries, every, every two years, every year that it came.
there were every two years, every year that came back to us, we reviewed them to see if they were abiding, abiding by the law. And also they were supposed to, as I recall, make a donation or art, art or hire people or, or some kind of things that would show their commitment to the community and benefit, benefit, yeah, community benefit. And the initial uh, questionnaire, however you want to phrase it, was part of that. What commitment do you have to the city? And prove that, you know, I could get whatever it was. It was a part of their posting to go back to the community. Often they donate to C P Y or to the parks. But that has been lost in the transferring of businesses. So that made me a thought. This is my quicker opinion. I would like to see the true agreement over to either or, but with the rule, whatever you do is with the consideration somehow of the growing factors of one or one more or two more, depending on where it'd be not more hard to Seaside, but in the new areas of Seaside, because they're going to be seniors that are living over there that need that for health reasons or whatever reason. Uh, and logistically it's closer for them to get to, uh, and, and because of the new sections, I think it's a business just like a, a, uh, a liquor store. Uh, we haven't had any problems with them over, to my knowledge, over the years. So two or three spines, maybe with the opportunity in the new section that we have the opportunity to come to the council and say, this is the new section. This is what we want to do. Based on certain criteria, whatever be some of the, going along with some of the ideas that we might have suggested earlier. But I'm finding to refer, if we can look at in the future with growth factors in the city and somebody else wants to uh, open a new business in a new section of Seaside where it's not as far as the, that is my, my.
Right. Anyone else? Uh, this is really just to get it down to four. And so, um, any other thoughts?
Yeah, of course. Uh, Councilmember Miller. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about parks and, uh, things, activities for kids on Campus Town, talked about a family friendly environment. Uh, the, the drive from Campus Town or East or wherever our future developments into our Seaside proper is not unreasonable drive. And so I, I, I still believe that the recommendation for four, and this is a good proposal.
Right. Let, let's, to be clear, the did you say that they couldn't go into Campus Town? You didn't say that.
The, well, currently you'd have to have at least two of them, you have to have at least three of them close. And then you would have an open slot and then that one could move to Campus Town under the way it's currently written.
So they can go to, they, they can open up one in Campus Town?
In theory, yes.
Well, I mean, it's not theory, they can. One has to close. What, what I'm saying.
Yes, if they close, then yes.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right? We don't have to expand the number for them to get into Campus Town. If one closes and the permit, or the guy moves from downtown to Campus Town, right? They could do that, couldn't they?
Not as it's currently written.
Right, right. Okay, I got you. You can move, okay, you can move on. All, all I'm saying is I'm here with the members, I'm saying is like, you know, spread them out, right? Because we, when we first went through this, we didn't want them all downtown, but that's where people were able to go and, and all of that stuff. That's what it went to. And so I just think you, you know, you leave that up to the market and, and they'll move to where they think they need to be moved to. Uh, but on this question about taking it down from nine to four, then then that's the question right now. Uh, I think, uh, councils in the future can decide whether they want to allow um, them to go to into Campus Town without increasing the number. I think it's the way to do that. And you just said it, changing the ordinance. I don't support increasing the number. I support going down. And then they can spread out just like it, you know, just like any other business, right? Uh, go ahead. I guess.
Clear. I've been for the past three, four, five years, I've been for reducing the number back to three or, or four, but six was, or nine, or whatever magic number we had, uh, was too high. So I'm for, I'm fine, fine with three. Uh, the, the less, the better. I was just trying to allow opportu- opportunities for new businesses in a simpler way as you suggested, uh, to move forward, but I am not, I mean, make this perfectly clear, I am not for the expansion of marijuana stores beyond four. And, and I'm open to, to three. Uh, I would just wanted to have other opportunities in other areas, one way or the other, however it happens. Yeah, that's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug, Councilmember, for Sierra Zolo.
I do have to agree with, uh, Mayor Protem of allowing opportunities to expand, uh, four is reasonable enough for me as well. Uh, but to say that in, in a certain part of the city, there there's not an ability to, to have dispensaries, I think is, we're talking about an equity component on that side. It's we're saying all of them can be in one part of Seaside, but they can't be in the other part because that's going to be a family friendly area or, um, new development. I think there's an equity component that we need to talk about a little, dig a, dig a little bit deeper. But I do agree on you that there needs to be an expansion if that opportunity does arise in the future.
What I could do is, okay.
I don't, I don't, was there a question there? Well, no question. The, the, the thing, what's going on now is is, is they expanding the concern of tonight, which is knocking it down to four. The equity issue about how do you, how do you use four around a community is another conversation which is changing the ordinance. That's all I'm getting to. Right? We don't have to decide at tonight, uh, if you guys think it should be allowed in other parts of the community. You have to change the ordinance, right? Uh, and, and so that's something, that's another conversation. Right? So I hear what both of you are saying and, and it makes sense. But we shouldn't, we should be clear about what we're doing. We're knocking it down from nine to four. Right? We're not talking about spreading it around at this meeting. In my opinion. Right? And so if there's any more questions or comments, go ahead.
Just real quick, four is okay, but I, if we're dealing with the heart of Seaside, I would be more than open to the idea of the re. That's it.
I'm, I, I'm with that, right? I'm with that. But, but the, uh, presentation was on four. And so could you just knock it down to three? You know, just, it's just a number, right? But see, the thing is, as they turn in, if they ever turn in, right? I just want to be clear for the public, right? Uh, so is, is anybody, is there anybody that, uh, is uncomfortable going down to three?
I'm okay with three.
Yeah. I'm, yeah, I'm, I, well, we don't want to go down to zero, not tonight. But the thing is, you know, whoever has one now continues to operate and have it. And as long as they keep up with the, with the, uh, ordinance and the requirements, they will continue to serve. Uh, but we're not doing nothing that's, that's outrageous going down to three. Uh, we just want to tell the community, you know, maybe we, we, we adopted too many in the past. And this council wants it to go down to three. So is that, is that substantial of a change or is that number okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, Knight, you're not adopting an ordinance. You're giving direction to staff to bring back an ordinance. You're just giving him direction as to what to include in the ordinance. So you are free to give him whatever direction you would like. Three is a number that.
Yes.
Yes.
Whatever number you like.
I was, my, my question to the attorney was because what was on, what was announced on the agenda? It wasn't whether we had authority or not. It's just, I don't want to mislead the, the community. City Manager, well, well, did you have anything before we asked the council, uh, what direction they want to give?
Well, I, I, I think, I think staff understands the direction. Uh, three members of this council have affirmatively said three. So, so it's three. We'll come back with an ordinance that says three.
Okay. Um, so there's no need for action?
I, I believe you've given sufficient direction.
All right. Okay, let's go on to item number ten D. Adopt a resolution authorizing contract with Colin, uh, Briskinner and Associates for the executive search services for the position of city manager in a amount not to exceed, uh, thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, uh, Mr. City Manager.
I'm particularly excited about this one, but I'll hand it off to our acting human resources director.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Attorney and members of the public. My name is Samantha. I'm with the Human Resources Department here tonight to present the item. On July thirtieth, the city issued a request for proposals to assist in the executive. Sorry. Set this. On July thirtieth, the city issued a request for proposals to assist in the executive search process for City Manager. Out of the four, the top three were selected and reviewed during a closed session meeting. Um, on September fifth, the cost of the proposals ranged from twenty-five thousand to thirty-nine thousand five hundred. Based on the extensive experience, nationwide success and detailed approach in completing the selected candidate's background process, a unanimous decision was selecting, um, Colin Basinger and Associates. The total cost for City Manager recruitment process is thirty-nine thousand five hundred, which is a fixed price. Um, we added an estimated a hundred fifty dollars for a one night lodging for the representative during the final interviews. So it is recommended not to exceed the cost of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. So, okay.
Thank you so much. Did you have something, City Manager?
I, I was just going to add, um, uh, briefly, that, uh, the proposed schedule in the, uh, in the proposal has changed just a little bit. Um, with the council selecting the finalist on December nineteenth, uh, and final interviews, uh, planned for January ninth and tenth rather than second and third. We thought it would be a little bit challenging to get people to the edge of this, uh, beautiful continent, uh, day after New Year's, uh, on the second and third.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, pretty straightforward, you know, moving, what the council wants to do is, you know, get a uh, the, the new city manager, the right city manager on board as soon as possible. Uh, hopefully we don't have to go out, but more than once. And I think, uh, maybe there might be some, uh, comments from the consultant, uh, about that or anything. Uh, no questions. Let's just go out to public comments, see if we have any comments that, uh, can be answered.
Peter Kaiser, City Council Mayor, um, forty thousand dollars seems like a lot of money for assisting in an executive search. Um, that may be two thirds of the average income of a Seaside single person, two thirds of their annual income. And you're just searching for someone. And, uh, this isn't going to be taking months of work. So that's one comment. And also when you write the contract for this new city manager, please do not give a golden parachute that if you have to release this new city manager for whatever reason, you don't give them a golden parachute with hundreds of thousands of dollars or maybe six months' income. Because this is critical tech and that could be, six months' income could be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Depending on what your starting pay is. So please, in the contract, make sure there's no golden parachute. If for some reason, the council and the city manager has a disagreement and you have to release them, there's no extra huge payment because that person, um, isn't working out. Thank you.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom. Please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Uh, my first question is with regards to when will the search begin? I didn't have an opportunity to look at this item and its attachments, uh, to let us know when the actual search, uh, the posting will go out. My next question is with regards to when are we going to be hiring an HR director? I understand we had over eighteen positions posted, some of those which are already filled right now. I just want to understand what is the motive behind that specifically because we don't have an HR director and I I don't recall that being one of the positions of eighteen. But I know there were several that were, that were posted and we have folks in those positions. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. Uh, before I forget, I, I did get a reminder from, uh, the, the city clerk to make sure all the council members use their mics. Uh, well, everybody on a dais used a mic. Uh, and so City Manager, are there any questions, issues or concerns you can ask at this time?
I think I can, Mayor. Um, uh, question about scheduling, uh, in the, the schedule prepared, uh, with the proposal, uh, there's a first phase that is needs assessment and information gathering. There's a, there's a good body of work uh, in order to develop the recruitment, uh, um, profile and, and make sure that it receives national attention. Uh, so that generally gets us into October eighteenth is what it says on the, um, uh, on the proposal's schedule that the recruiting will actually begin. Um, so, so it takes a, a few weeks to, to get that under, underway and underway properly. Uh, the HR director is one of the eighteen positions, uh, that is, um, that we are, well, I, I didn't check with the acting HR director today if, uh, if we're at eighteen or nineteen or seventeen, we're at one of those two, one of those three numbers. Uh, but the HR director, uh, position will be, uh, the recruitment will begin, uh, not later than next week.
Are any other questions or, or comments on this? Uh, you, could you speak to the reasonableness of this, um, contract? I mean, it, it was stated that somehow it's, it's a lot of money, which we understand it is, but as relates to, is this what it costs to get what we're trying to do?
Yeah, um, the, this is a, uh, a reasonable, uh, number. Uh, if you look at the proposal, um, the proposal has, uh, includes extensive uh, background checks. Uh, this firm does the best background checks in the business. They have the best guarantee in the business. Uh, they're national, they're a firm of national reputation. I have no connection to them. I just know of their reputation. Um, so, so thirty-nine thousand dollars to hire, uh, someone who, you know, um, has responsibility for um, hundreds of, um, decisions and, um, and and, you know, a budget, um, in excess of seventy million dollars is is the norm. Um, somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars is, is quite typical uh, to hire a firm of national, uh, reach and national reputation.
Uh, thank you so much. What, any comments?
Just a couple of questions to make for clarity purposes. Um, Ms. Alcaraz, maybe you can answer. Just one, I want to thank you for your hard work and your acting role as the director of the department. I think things have moved along and I appreciate all what you do for the countless years you've been doing it. So this is, it was noted early, this is a search thing, but this is basically a search and find. We will get somebody out of this search, correct?
Yes, that's a guarantee.
And then hopefully I'm right in this. In the contract, as I recall, so, and last time we did this, even I think the time before, if we didn't, don't find somebody the first round and they have to go out again like we did for sure last time, there's no increased cost to us like there was last time. Is that a correct statement, I hope?
That's correct. Scott. Yes.
Yes, right. But I remember last time we went out, paid a certain amount of money, then we had to go out again and there are countless other dollars. So this is a, this is the bottom line dollar for, in large part. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I think, I think as the city manager pointed out, this is very good. Especially related to the background checks and the in-depth.
Especially related to the background checks and the in depth of that. I think it's, uh, it's something that's vital to the city of Seaside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, totally agree. This is a very competent firm and and we, uh, appreciate them and look forward to the work and getting this done. And, and we look forward to, uh, interviewing potential candidates here, uh, shortly. Uh, but we may, you know, what we don't want to do is put ourselves in a box, right? And so we're going to do best we can to get the best, uh, uh, future city manager and we'll see, uh, who they are and we'll see what timeframe that is. But I don't want to put myself in some type of box because we owe it to the city and the citizens to get the best person as we believe that they are and, and go from there. Uh, someone made a comment about, you know, salary and contracts. All that is to be discussed if we find someone, when we find someone, uh, and salary and benefits. And that's public conversation at that time. That's not, uh, at this time right here. All right. What is the will of the council?
I'm going to approve 10D.
Uh, thank you. It's been properly moved and second, uh, 10D, uh, all those in favor, use the red sign voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Mayors have the same right. Ayes have it motion carried. Let's go to E, a resolution approving Campus Town Phase 1A, Street Names. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, mayor. We have a, uh, brief presentation that I think I am doing. Um, and if we could get to the second slide, that'd be great. Uh, so the, um, the city council named streets by resolution. And oftentimes in, in cities across the, the country, uh, the streets just get named, uh, sort of almost randomly. Um, but here they're not being named randomly at all. Uh, let's get to the next slide. Uh, they're being named for people, uh, who have played important, uh, parts in, in this community's history and future. So let's get to the next slide. Uh, these are the streets. Oh, wait, and they put the pictures on, on the streets. That's cool. Okay, uh, so, so these are the streets, uh, being presented. Uh, let's get to the next slide or the, wait, whoa, not that one. Let's go back. There we go. So, so the names are Rucker Avenue, Rubio Avenue, Jordan Avenue, Watts Court, Bakewell Court, Smith Court and DeBarry Court. Um, these are, we put this, uh, as a last time on the agenda because we thought it was, uh, a little bit of a happiness, uh, to share with, with, uh, the community that, uh, these wonderful people are going to be represented, uh, on street names in Campus Town. And I'd like to thank the developer, uh, for proposing them.
Uh, if there's any comments the developer would like to make.
Again, my name is Danny Bakewell. I'm with Katie Bakewell. Um, we proposed these names and I want to say we, we've looked at the history of Seaside. We have a long, extensive list of people that we're, this is a very small part of Campus Town's project. Um, there are a lot more streets to name and a lot more people that we intend to pay tribute to and honor to who have really been a part of the building of Seaside. Um, quite honestly, when we submitted most of these names, most of these people were still around and some of them have passed on. Um, and we're trying to kind of accelerate it to give those who are still around their flowers, uh, before they go on their merry way. But we are very, very honored to, to be able to do this. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you so much. Are there any questions? Uh, Councilmember Miller?
Thank you. Dominique, can you pull up the map, uh? One more time, the, the streets, some of the streets are the ones that are not named. Are they? Are they not streets or in between the, the names? Does this include all of the names?
Those are alleys between garages. Sorry.
No, you could, yeah, why don't you come up and just, it seemed like you have a good, just want to speak in my access to those that are at home and for the record.
The streets that you can't see names on are just alleys between garages. Like below Jordan, that would be an alley which just serves garages. And then the other side is actually a walkway, a sidewalk to the front doors of those homes.
Thank you for that great explanation.
No problem.
Our public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Anne Marie, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
I'm glad to see that Mr. Bakewell said that these are not the last of the names being made, uh, being named. Um, as having lived in my, my entire life here in Seaside, I have nothing against the people that have been named tonight. Um, but it just seems like these names keep repeating. Uh, most of these names, if not all of them, have already gotten stars. Several of them have already gotten keys to the city. Um, I ju, you know, Seaside has a lot more people past and present that had a lot to do, a lot of contributions to the city. And I think they should be honored as well. Um, that's just my comment. I just would like to see more names out there because we have had so many great leaders and former mayors and people that were within the city from its inception. Um, that I believe should be named as well. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Uh, thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Um, I got, I got just a clarifying question because I, I thought it was important, uh, when someone, uh, mentioned about more streets. And, and that was one of the first thing you, you said was it's more streets to come. And so I just, I don't know if you have that number right now, but as it relates to this, you know, how many total streets are there, you know? Just so, just so people could get understanding, is this five or six?
Yeah, there's approximately, and, and, and this is not a hard number, but there's definitely, there's approximately 20 more streets to be named.
At least.
At least. And quite honestly, there's only one of these names that crosses Gen with Jim Moore and goes on to the much larger phase two. And that's Rubio Avenue. That's the one center street that goes all the way through. After that, every other street that spines off will have new names.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's what I'm just trying to, the perspective is it's more than seven streets. So it's a lot of streets to, to have to be named.
Yeah, this is, this is literally probably the smallest phase of the overall project.
Yeah, streets, parks.
Streets, parks, walkways. There's, you know, commercial centers. So there's a lot of room in buildings and things that still need to be named. And so.
Possibly after some.
Possibly after some.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, uh, bringing it back to the, um, council. And, and, and I would just couple, one last thing is that. And, and then it's not really for the council to be telling you guys what to name the streets.
I mean, that is not.
Because people say, well, hey, mayor, you tell them to name it after me or, you know, you tell them the name or whatever. I just want to be clear. It's not really our responsibility.
Not the council's responsibility. I think this might be one of the first times the council has seen it, but but I'm around Seaside all the time. I'm open to suggestions. If people have suggestions, I'm more than willing to listen and talk about it and all of these things. So.
Cause, cause I think it's other developments that's been around different communities and I don't know if they ever reached out and they're, you know, naming after their community members. So we appreciate what you guys are doing. And so we can't take that for granted. But I wanted to be sure that we're not sitting here acting as though we, we have to sign off or have the authority to sign off. This is just informational because you went through the proper naming with, what is it, the fire department and the police department? You know, those are the people that, that have to read this number out.
All the sign offs have been gotten, gotten. Quite honestly, uh, I was telling someone in a meeting the other day. I was a little more fancier with things like Rucker Road and, you know, Rubio Road, and I was trying to make them rhyme. But the building official told me it's more about avenues go this way and courts go this way and those kinds of things, which made it less fancy, but made it a lot easier for public officials. Council does have to ultimately adopt these names, but they were signed up by the post office, fire and police person.
That's what I want to get into. You know, we don't want to go behind the post office. We don't want to go, for me, we, I don't want to go behind the professionals that do this day in and day out, uh, because of whatever reason I may have internally. That's all I'm saying. We uh, any other questions or, or comments? All right, what is the will of the council?
Move approval.
So probably moved a second on the question. All those in favor, use the red sign voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Mayors have the same right. Ayes have it, uh, motion carried. Uh, number 11, council members' request. There's no, uh, new requests. Um, you know, this is the time, uh, at every meeting that, uh, I make comments about any request that any council member may want to put someone on the agenda. Uh, and so, all right. Let's go to, uh, follow up on previous requests, city manager. Uh, there are no, there are no follow up items. Okay. And I know we're, we're about to close here in about 10 minutes. Yeah. And so, uh, and so, uh, city attorney, city manager, the city council, mayor's comments and reports on committee assignments. Uh, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a little piece of really great news to report. The property at 355 Sonoma, um, just sold by the public administrator. And in that process, the city was able to recover $104,000 of its costs that it spent on cleanup. And so those funds have been transferred to the city. So not only is that property going to be out there in active reuse, but the city also recovered its costs. So that's a little piece of good news. And I was pleased to attend the Grand Hyatt dedication ceremony on Monday, marking a, um, chapter in Seaside's, um, history to move that project forward. So that's what I have to report. Thank you.
City Manager.
Just to update the council on where we're at on some of our key, uh, position recruitments. Uh, I've made an offer to a chief building official. I expect that offer, uh, to be accepted and, uh, announced as early as tomorrow, uh, and not later than next week. Uh, the, the good news is, uh, the person lives in Seaside already. Um, and then for public works director, HR director and finance director, uh, those recruitments are in process. And I expect all of them to be completed by Thanksgiving.
Uh, I, I'll come back to my question about you. The, uh, council member Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one of my favorite, uh, events that we do in Seaside is the moment of sirens for the 9/11. And, uh, what a powerful and compelling, um, morning that was. And, uh, the fire and police chief just did a wonderful job. And, uh, that same day, at later that day, I had my Ambag meeting and in Ambag, we, uh, discussed our metropolitan transportation improvement program, which there is some money for, uh, for jurisdictions, including ours. And then also update on the rural, uh, regional energy network, uh, and that's for energy, uh, solar, wind and EV. And we're exploring how, uh, how the rural rent could benefit, uh, the city of Seaside. And I will be advocating for us on that. And then it was great to be with the, uh, city attorney and the council for the, uh, groundbreaking at the Hyatt, the Grand Hyatt. And, uh, to see the amount of people that came from outside our jurisdiction that really cared about, uh, us and improving, uh, it was really, it was really inspiring. So kudos to, uh, staff for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Burks.
Um, my AMP meeting has been moved to October, um, and I was able to participate in the opening, um, game for our Raider football and cheer. Um, again, thanks to all the volunteers and parents for making that successful. And I also had the opportunity to meet with Ventana Wildlife, which is a nonprofit. Um, and we're working at, um, one of their goals is exposing our youth of color to, uh, state parks. Um, so we even had a overnight camping experience down at Andrew Malera, um, with the goal of, um, getting our students to have, um, healing through the, through nature. So I'm looking at, uh, working with them and bringing them to Seaside.
Councilmember Garcia Zol.
Thank you. On the 6th of September, I attended the Epicenter's 10th year anniversary celebration. Uh, Epicenter is a wonderful organization that serves our, our students and, uh, just to celebrate 10 years of progress, 10 years of, of great service that they do to our youth. It was, it was just amazing. And to have some Seaside representation there was even better. Uh, on 9/11, uh, just want to send a huge shout out to our police and fire departments for hosting that wonderful memorial service. Uh, every year, uh, you always leave, I think, with a sense of, of hope, but also remembering those victims, uh, those people, the victims that we lost, uh, on that tragic day on 9/11. Um, just great seeing the mayor, Mayor Potem, uh, Councilmember Miller was there as well. Um, really good event. On the 14th, I went to, I was asked to speak at the Carmel School Education, School Education Foundation Celebration that they hosted in Carmel to talk about a little bit about what Seaside is doing with their internship program and how that's working and how that came into fruition. Uh, the foundation is currently, uh, launching new programs in civic engagement, journalism and agriculture as well. So to share a little bit about our city is doing out into different parts of this, uh, region is important. On the 16th, attended the Grand Hyatt ground, uh, groundbreaking ceremony alongside the mayor, Mayor Potem and Councilmember Miller. Uh, great celebration to see hospitality industry all gathered together, see Monterey, Monterey County Hospitality Association. Just key partners. Many would think that a new development would seem as, um, a rivalry to the, to the rest of the region. And, and what we saw was, uh, these organizations in these different, um, uh, industries and the hospitality industry are excited about this new development. It'll increase our tourism. It'll increase jobs. Uh, and more than anything, it'll set Seaside, uh, it'll set the foundation for Seaside's future growth and where we want to head. And I think that's what the whole event highlighted, the new era for Seaside and where we're going to be headed. So I was super excited to just be there, have, uh, Supervisor Wendy Roaske also join us. And, um, we had, uh, remarks from Assemblymember Addis, Senator Lehrer's office and Congressman Panetta's office as well. So everybody was excited. That's good. Tomorrow morning I have the Regen Board Meeting, uh, and on the 30th, I have my Monterey Board Meeting. So you should expect a report out by, uh, hopefully next council meeting. And that's it.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Potem.
Uh, I participated in the Fall of Park cleanups at Capra and Lincoln Cunningham Parks, I believe with the mayor was there as well. Uh, that partnership with Forest, uh, is truly impactful in our community and we need to, uh, support Forest as much as we can as far as making difference in the parks. Uh, the MST Surf Project was approved by the Coastal Commission. The approval was a significant step in moving the project forward for faster and improved services. We all attended the 9/11, I, I think was the first class event. Grand Hyatt, it was great to, the community in general was supportive, was very positive, uh, this, hopefully soon they'll be, uh, going upwards to make, uh, Seaside a first class or a greater and stronger community. Youth senior, I mean, not the, the senior dance was held today, uh, great food, music and dancing, uh, lots of fun for everybody. And I attended a uh, bits and pieces of a couple of football games at, uh, Seaside High School with the Raiders. Uh, it's really nice to see the parents. Uh, very supportive, the kids playing well and, uh, the community, uh, supporting their efforts. That's it.
I thank you. I'll try to just highlight and be, uh, fairly quick here. I tend to manage being down in Gonzalez, uh, you know, Gonzalez is really on the move, doing some wonderful things there downtown. So I want to appreciate the mayor, uh, for Gonzalez for hosting us down there. Uh, wasn't able to attend the Blue Zone Monterey County Salinas Certification of Blue Zone City. Uh, kudos to, uh, uh, Kimberly Craig as mayor and, and what that council is doing to, to become a Blue Zone City. I know we're on the path, uh, forward and, uh, we should continue that strong path forward to becoming a Blue Zone, uh, uh, city. Uh, had a housing discussion about how to build housing on church property. Uh, I think we just need to have our Seaside, uh, um, city manager, have our Seaside, uh, Housing Collaborative figure out a way to integrate themselves into that conversation to help some of these churches realize their ability to, uh, uh, build affordable housing on their parcels. A wonderful 9/11 remember ceremony. Want to thank the, um, fire chief and the police chief for continuing to, uh, make sure that's an annual event and and allow us to not only remember, but also highlight our current firm. and, and allow us to not only remember, but also highlight our current firm with, uh, uh, current first responders for what they do every day, uh, running towards danger. Uh, ten of water manager meeting with the city manager and the city attorney, uh, that we, that, uh, Director Edwards talked about earlier, about how do we, uh, accept this new, uh, allotment of, uh, of water and what we can do with it. So I want to thank the city attorney, city manager for being there for that. Uh, we also hosted Senator Laird, uh, State Senator Laird was here and we took him on a tour of Seaside and talked about our challenges and our successes. And, uh, it was a good meeting with him and we appreciate, uh, the city manager for laying that out for us. Uh, we look forward to continuing a close relationship with our state senator and our state assembly member, uh, as we go forward. Uh, people talk about the Grand Hyatt, a wonderful dedication ceremony. We look forward for them to, uh, break ground here soon, uh, maybe in the beginning of the year. But I do want to highlight, because someone said earlier about how people came from far and wide. Uh, the, the, uh, general manager from Bernardes was here. Uh, uh, I guess checking things out when it's only was a pitcher, right? But, but he wanted to be here on ground with us because what that thing will be in, in, uh, uh, in the future. And also I believe, uh, Mayor Potter was here too. So I want to, uh, thank him for coming out. But it's a wonderful ceremony and I want to thank, uh, Dr. Patel for making the trip for Flo- from Florida over here, uh, to be on site. Uh, attended Monterey one, Monterey Water, uh, Management District Meeting. I look at the council member, he's on Monterey One Water, I'm on the district. Uh, but we talked about the user fees that, uh, uh, we had to figure out a way to return to, uh, the, the users, uh, after, after losing our latest court case. Uh, we need to work on that. So I just want to say that out loud. Uh, attended United Way Monterey County's community breakfast, uh, it was a wonderful breakfast. Uh, the things that, you know, United Way does in this community just goes without words because they've been doing it for so long. And it was also an opportunity for them to highlight, uh, the decades of service for, uh, supervisor, uh, Mary Adams, who was the CEO, president of United Way before she became supervisor. So a good dear friend, we want to congratulate her. Uh, she'll be retiring here after this last, uh, uh, November election. Tended to Seaside Housing Collaborative Meeting, uh, it was well done and, and, and the, the conversation is how do we find, uh, partners, uh, particularly, uh, low income housing developers or market rate developers, but how does Seaside Housing Collaborative, uh, use what resources the city has to partner with others to build affordable housing and workforce housing particularly? That's our mandate, workforce housing. How can we do that into the future? Um, senior dance was, was well done again today. We appreciate our seniors coming out and what they do at direct department. Uh, uh, Mayor Potem talked about, uh, our weekly, uh, park donation, not donation, but, but volunteerism that we do at the park. And so city manager, I want to say that even though we're doing shutting down Lincoln Cunningham Park, uh, we need to figure out a way how to protect the work that Fosso has been doing. Uh, not necessarily just around the trees, but it's other things that they have done. We don't want the back holes just to say, hey, you know, let's make space and go over all that. Particularly after the tons of, uh, wood chips I moved and, uh, tons of weeds that the, uh, Mayor Potem pulled up. And I know every once in a while, the other council members come out there when they're available too. Uh, we did attend a couple of Seaside Raiders football games. Uh, we support the Raiders and me and the city manager have a meeting with their leadership, uh, team. Uh, I think sometime next week, uh, to discuss, uh, how Seaside can better support them because they do have some challenges as it relates to, uh, resources. So hopefully the council can give behind that. That's it. That's all I had. Okay. Are any other questions coming? Okay. We'll move to item number 14. There being no further, uh, business on this agenda, uh, this meeting is adjourned, our next meeting. What? That's what, what? Okay. Well, I'm sorry, but some, it, it was usually supposed to be, okay. All right. So, no, 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 you, and, um, uh, the mayor Pro Tim, uh, uh, has some words and some comments to, to help close us out properly.
Yeah. Just wanted to recognize the, uh, and to close the meeting in honor of Linda Smith. Uh, she served for the city of Seaside for 26 years in the preschool program at Tiny Town University. And prior to that, she was at Derry Wood School, uh, working with three, four, five years old. Uh, you have to have the patience of a saint and, uh, she truly did. She was very patient. She supervised the area she impacted over the years. Probably thousands of little three, four, five year olds that went to further education. Uh, a lot of them have brought their kids back to Tiny Town University. She was instrumental, I think, in, in some life-changing opportunities for young people. And she's just, just a very sweet, kind lady and very supportive of the city of Seaside. She was always that Sunday blues and just a music of, a fan of music, but very caring, loving. Uh, a parent and, uh, resident of Seaside for decades. Thank you.
And we, I want to say, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim for honoring, uh, Mrs. Smith by, uh, making sure we close this meeting in her honor and her memory. And our thoughts and prayers go out to her family. And so, uh, thank you so much. Uh, there being no further business on this agenda, this meeting.